Good evening everyone. And welcome to the Monday June 17th, 2024 Town and Front Back Planning Board Meeting. We are missing to adding more members this evening to other departments that we can't perform until we be able to proceed with the meeting. I do not believe there are any changes to the agenda this evening?
Yes, there are referrals.
Which one?
Yes, there are referrals.
Is that on my agenda?
I wrote it on the paper.
Oh, okay.
And the local cell phone.
Okay, so we have two new referrals. Carol from the Town Board this evening, one on the short-term rental and the other on the work is for workforce housing. We'll take those up at the end of the meeting. You received Jim's meeting notes?
Yes.
Any comments on the meeting notes?
I think they can't hear you, they don't know the meeting has started.
I've got my microphone on, can people hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I was asking for the planning board members to indicate to me whether they approve of the meeting notes they received.
I hope that we approve.
We have a motion, one second, almost in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the motion carries. You received a draft form, which in 30 minutes. Are there any corrections or additions anyone wishes to make to those minutes?
I think we accept.
Have a motion, second please.
Second.
Second, Tom, almost in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the motion carries. As I pointed out under announcements, we'll be taking up the referral on short-term rentals and work is killed workforce housing at the end of the meeting. We have only one new application this evening, that is Florence and Gainer at 521 Mill Road for site plan and special use permit to build a single-family dwelling. I believe Mark is here representing.
Great. Good evening. Mark Kliminsky, here representing Ken Florence and Melissa Dean. Property is located on the east side of Mill Road, it's 521 Mill Road. It's actually an opposite county property. And property size is perhaps a little under 14, 44, 5 acres. And this property, I was actually involved in this property several years ago with a previous owner. They may have been in front of this board, but I didn't represent the board, but I did some work relative to sanitary disposal on the property. And so the, actually, on this site is, there's actually, they got as far as constructing a foundation. And this foundation is actually, it's located right here. And so currently, there's an access driveway that's off of Mill Road. So I'll, I'll start and I'll work my way in on the property. So this, this is, so it's Mill Road, it obviously, it's also a county highway, it's Dutch County Highway number 35. And so when I actually worked on it previously, gained an access permit from Dutch County Department of Public Works. I reached out to DPW and the permit has actually been, they discontinued the permit. The previous owners never completed the entrance, I mean, there's a gravel entrance here, but there's a drainage work that needs to be done. And obviously, you know, paid paper associated with it. So part of this application will be, you know, reaching out to DPW, getting their access off of the county road into the property. And so then, as you head into the property, you see this area right here. And so that's where I was previously involved in the project with former owners. And due to the soil conditions on the site, they're poorly drained soils, clay soils. So it was development of a subject system that was ultimately approved by the Dutch County Department of Health. It's for a two-bedroom residence at the time. And this, you know, I think the board's maybe from other ways, it's about the super fill. And so excessive amount of fill needs to be brought in, actually, you know, a total of seven feet of fill, gravel fill that is brought in. And so it's actually through this entire area, we were able to construct the driveway, you know, as on part of that fill section to ultimately go to, you know, where the previous residence and now the current residence is to be located. And so once again, I said I was going to work my way in, so I just mentioned that this is for, this design is for a two-bedroom dwelling. And that was approved. And so this application is for a four-bedroom residence. And so been in touch with the health department and to discuss whether or not this could be expanded. And so we're actually going to expand to the south with this fill system here to be able to accommodate a four-bedroom residence. And so I'm trying to bring it up at this time, because I know the policy of this board is not to grant approval until you obtain approval from the Dutch County Department of Health. In this case, when working with a super fill system, it's actually a two-step process with the Dutch County Health Department. In this case, we would, you know, first of all, do some soil testing here just to, you know, to confirm, you know, the fill material and adequate amount, and then do some additional testing over here. And so now, the health department requires, as I said, two-step process. First process is to submit a grading plan. And that grading plan is designed in such a way to accommodate the, you know, the separation distances required by the health department and have the adequate amount of fill. And typically, they like to go through a freeze-thaw cycle, but I was actually talking to somebody in, I don't know if it's close here, with our weather change, but generally through, you know, through a winter, go through a winter, let it settle, go back, retest it with the health department, and then finalize the design. Right? And then it's, you know, obviously, it'll be designed in such a way that it'll accommodate the residents. And in this case, because, so this is, this location of the proposed residence is lower than this amount of fill. So right now, there would be a subject tank, a pump station, and it would pump up to here. And actually, it's going to be designed in such a way that this is the primary and this is the expansion area. We're actually going to, we're going to do both. We're going to, you know, we're opening it up and doing the work. There'll be two pumps in here, and one over the primary, one for the expansion since you're building it. And so in order to get to that, once again, you have to go through that first phase. And so I just asked, you know, at this time, the board's consideration in considering this site plan and special permit application is that health department's only going to approve the grading plan first. And that's anticipated to occur, you know, within two, three months of this year. And so, you know, hopefully, as we proceed through the application, one of the, you know, the owners are desirous of considering starting construction this fall for the project. You know, six foundations here could like to take advantage of the building season for this year. So I just throw that out for the board to consider. In this case, health department's not, not going to, they're going to approve a grading plan that's phase one. They won't do that unless all the design components are in place to do that. And then it would not be probably until next year that they would do the second phase of that approval, where they're actually looking at, you know, the details of the components, where the subject tank is, where the pump station is, and then adequate design associated with that. So I just, once again, ask for the board's consideration to consider approval of the project so they can start this fall with that first, that phase one approval with the health department. Next thing is that, you know, as part of the, you know, part of this application, you know, and through, you know, what was requested at the beginning, providing some photographs in the site plan that show the, you know, future from Mill Road. There's, you know, this is a tree area right here now. And so, you know, as I go through this presentation, also with me here this evening is a representative of the architect, James Dixon, and also the landscape architect, Wagner Hodgson is also there. So once I finish with this initial presentation, they're going to come up and speak to some detail with the architect and landscape architect. And I think as far as application materials, provided items outlined in Jim's memo for the project, site plan, a special permit application, obviously, due to the, you know, multiple things, you know, located within 1,000 feet of the Hudson River. As I said before, Hines property is right here, Hudson River's in Mill Road here. There's some major excavation obviously involved with the subject system, and some of the landscaping, landscaping does also want to occur for it. And, let's see.
Would it be possible to get the, any more drives on screen? These are really old, pretty complex drives.
That is it?
Yeah. Is there a segue?
Yes.
Yeah, so if you go back to the segment.
Thank you.
Right to, back to your talk about the trees. Driveway, driveway basically used in the same location, there's a drainage, that was also installed at that residence. And then you can see here where I showed the available expansion of this area for sanitary disposal. Also, I should note that there is, based on previous subdivision of this property, there's conservation used for the first time in the city. And actually, when you go to the east end of the property, there's also, there's a stream back there, there's also a conservation used located there. And, you know, obviously, some improvements coming into around the residence, there's a parking area here, parking port here, parking port here, which, you know, I know there's a super good discussion of that. Pathway going to the back, here's a walkout situation toward the residence here. And then I actually show proposed locations for subject tank and pump station that goes into. Taking a look at site disturbance on the property minimal, since a lot of the improvements are already in place. So, you know, under five acres of disturbance, I think, you know, maybe a little more than acre disturbance on the site. I think actually I have a few acres that are, you can see that. And I think that's it. I'll turn over to the, you know, the architects and the landscape architect.
My name's Alex Stradler, I work for James Dixon Architect. I'm representing Ken and Melissa, as well as the rest of the team for those single-family dwellings. So this is a pretty simple rendering of the front of the house, parking port. You can see it's two big wall, just sort of proposing, big wall in between it, some stone here. Real simple, pocketed side, standing side roof.
I saw, I saw.
Oh, yes, I saw it, sorry. Could you, I'm sorry, could you scan a little bit closer to the mic? Sorry about that.
Do you see Grace looking at it a bit, is that you can speak into it?
So as Mark explained, this foundation is an existing foundation, we're making some minor modifications to it. What we have here is the basement plan, so there's a number of mechanical storage rooms. Likewise, we have a music room with a bathroom, a small basement hall for storage, and then a small mudroom. And then there's the walkout basement, you can see we're graphically representing what Kayla talked about, which is sort of the landscape terrace development that's happening on the north, northeast corner of the house. Next slide. This is the first floor plan, so you can see, so there's a covered porch where you enter. This is sort of a guest parking port, covered in porch entry here. Main entry of the house, just a small stairwell. Great room with kitchen, dining room, living room. This is a vaulted ceiling, so it's nice small step inside. Small breakfast room. And then there's a deck off of the great room. The two primary suites are on the north side of the house, so there's one primary suite here, a second primary suite here. This gallery is the exterior wall, that's almost seen here on it. And then we are proposing an attached walkout garage, just sort of sliding onto the subdivision. Likewise, there's a back of house entry here with the mudroom, and then a sort of a worthy pantry of appliances. And then off of the great room, you come out onto the terrace, and it steps down as you go from the first floor down to the walkout basement, just sort of walk along this path. And I will, I'll listen to that next slide. So it's a really modest second floor, given that we have a great room with the vaulted ceiling. We were going to have to see what that is was, so we spoke with clients about having an attic third bedroom upstairs. There's an attached bath here. This is not accessible attic space, and this is just open vaulted ceiling for the great room below. Simple roof plan showing the roof materials, which are all going to be standing side roof. There's a couple of small dormers that sort of catch a little breeze looking north and outdoor access. So just some architectural exterior elevations, where we start calling out materials. So we've got this stone here, clockboard siding where there's a trim. We've got a stone here chimney. Likewise, on this elevation, you can see, we're showing a couple of light fixtures at the great room deck. Very simple material palette, but one that we feel is complimentary to the area, sort of keeping with, sort of, that's about. Likewise, just other sort of elevations. So this is southeast facing away from the road. You've got a walkout basement here with the deck above. And then you've got some covered porch areas, and implications of what the landscape architecture is, but those are much easier to draw in. It's a, next slide. Lighting plan, just to show you where the exterior lights are going to go, including, we've got a couple of scents here, and some surface lighting fixture on the outside. This is under the great room deck, southeast facing out of the house. But the other lights are all just interior lighting. Next slide. Likewise, first floor structural plan, just switching lighting locations. So we've got some surface mounted lights that are exterior here, surface mounted like here. Scents on either side of the door, and then scents on the garage. Next slide. And likewise, the second floor structural plan, just to put the story. Next slide. Just versions of light fixtures that have been selected by the clients, these are all just not compliant. But this is basically standard, got the light fixtures that they were liking. Next slide.
That's the end.
There about landscape architecture.
It was a separate file, which, um, Klimski, I couldn't move a few moments.
There it is, there we go. I'm going to now turn this over to Michaela, but thank you guys for your consideration.
Hi, my name is Michaela Sherman-Burright. I'm the landscape designer and project manager for Gainer Florence Project, Ryan Hodgson, landscape architecture. And like Mark and Alex have been talking with us about this property here, really the landscape approach with Ken and Melissa has been to try to keep things more naturalized, keep things tight around the house, and really start with our necessities first. So Mark pointed out the driveway, which we are keeping in the current alignment through past the, the subject system here. And then you have some planting focused towards the front to help screen the system from the road and also provide more of a visual buffer for people traveling along county road. Coming up to the house, we have a small guest parking area here, should accommodate two to three cars. And then going through a small field stone wall that extends off the architecture, the driveway wraps around to the attached garage that Alex spoke of. Off the back here, we have a larger parking port, which just allows for vehicles to turn in, back out. And then it's two additional spaces here. Off the end of the parking port, we show a small vegetable garden that'll be raised beds. And then the rear of the house is really focused on navigating grade change. So we do have that walkout condition that was discussed earlier. So we have two paths walking, going around the side of the house that navigate that change. This path closer to the house, a series of steps, they navigate the grade down. The client expressed interest in having access to the lower level outdoors that didn't have any steps. So we've supplied a ramp through here that'll be a key gravel material. So walking around to the backyard, we have a fence lit area for the backyard for the owner's dogs. And then, again, navigating grade change, there's the walkout basement here. And then we also have a upper level access through the living room and dining room. So we show a system of terraces that wrap around this portion of the house to gain access to the lower level. The terraces are some classic stone steps mixed in with some lawn terraces. So they're lawn steps that have a stone curb, and it allows us to navigate grade change more naturally, feels more settled into the landscape, rather than just doing straight staircase. Can we go to the next slide? So I'll go through these rather quickly, it's more time to look at the colorful plan. But, so this is our layout materials plan, so it starts talking about materials in detail. And then we supply images as well, to start talking about some of the materials that the client is interested in, which is chip seal peaking, which appears as a gravel driveway. So we're replacing granite, it has a really great patina. And then also just your classic limestone. Thank you.
Just now the bolt.
And then just speaking about some of the other basements elements that I spoke to earlier, we are proposing some field stone walls, not uncommon in the area. This center bottom image shows the lawn steps that I was describing. So we have that stone granite curb, and then the brass landing. And then a classic monolithic stone step. This is part of our requirements with Mark, so we're doing, just showing the grade change grading plan that shows all of our proposed grading elements, including the terraces and the steps and ramp. So this is our proposed lighting plan. So we are doing some very minimal outdoor lighting focused on navigation, just to simply help the client and owner navigate from the front as they drive in into the mudroom. We're proposing some small paper step, paper lights that are indicated in this image here. And then around the side of the house, we are proposing lamp pathlights. And then just very minimal for navigation of these steps and terraces to the upper level. The lighting is, like I said, strictly navigational, no real accent of no uplights. Everything is downward and has a lamp over the light source. So like Alex showed you with his lighting fixtures, these are some cut sheets for lighting fixtures that we are continuing out. This is that flush mounted paper light. Some wall lights that are inset, pass light down onto the base of the wall. And then as well as our lamp pathlight. So this is a first pass at our planting palette. So keeping, the client is expressed a lot of interest in keeping things really naturalized. With focus on screening along the front, like I previously mentioned, and also along the size of the property, property line. Screening will be a mix of evergreen and deciduous trees. And then around the house, keeping things really low maintenance, not all native, but naturalized, non-invasive plants. So we saw some of these elevations earlier, but now we see it in a focus of landscape. So just kind of Alex's and the些建筑 in the background and in the foreground. Starting to look at some of the landscape elements that we'll be layering on. Is that field stone wall that you drive through to come to the attached garage. And then this indicates the steps and landings down to the walkout basement. Again, just starting to kind of pinch down type of planting. So we're having some deciduous trees, and then relieve blush, naturalized plantings around the house. These show our other elevations, side of the house, and then also the front of the house. So again, showing how we're layering planting in with our terraces to help soften that view and create a nice experience for the client. Thank you.
That's it.
My mic's dead, that's all right, I can speak loudly. So thank you for that, answered a couple of questions I had on the memo, and everything in there. So for the board, I had talked about whether or not we need to consider whether or not the walkout music room could or should be considered a bedroom, which you've already done that for purposes of this application, and that's why it's four bedrooms. So you've got the music room as one, and then the other three, so that has been answered. The conservation is a part, I know it's along the front and the back of the site. I assume that was just to kind of protect those edges from development or disturbance. from development or disturbance. And the cut from the driveway is permitted. But can we get a copy of that?
Yeah, I submitted a copy.
Was it in there? Okay.
Well, I submitted it to, I submitted a copy of the... So it was a subdivision plan? And on that subdivision plan, references that...
I just missed the notation. As long as we have that in the problem. One of the questions I did have, go back to your plan board. Is the status of this driveway? We mentioned this during the pre-con. I don't see it on Aerials, and it's not shown as being approved. But it does still show this kind of gravel driveway connection over to the other properties. Just curious if it must not be on...
It is a group, so it is a gravel driveway. But from my understanding at the pre-con, you know, so obviously now it... You know, because of, you know, the properties in the north, same owners. And so all of a sudden, I understand that entrance comes upon the driveway that's access over here. So the intention at this time is that it would be abandoned. So what would be my question?
One minor detail, we talked about the fence in the back. I think, well, once again, I must admit that we just need a cut of what you're proposing here. The elevation looking at the panels and whatnot. Can you just discuss briefly what the plan is?
Absolutely. So right now, we are proposing a 42-inch tri-fence. It'll be a four-by-four wooden post within a welded wire mesh infill. So no frame, something that really receives into the background and especially into the planting. So we are going to get through planting. We can definitely provide details and photographs for that element.
Slide explanation or something? Just have one or two others. I guess my only other real comment is when it comes to parking, it seems to be like an awful lot of parking for bedrooms. I know you had talked about there being anywhere from two to three up front. You have the garage and then two dedicated spaces down here. But I mean, I can see there would be two cars here. There would be three up here, two down here. And if you kind of parallel parks in here. Just questioning, and you're nowhere near your limits of disturbance or your impervious or anything. It just seems like where that could be cut back a little bit. But if that's, you know, if it was there enough, that's fine. Just seem like a long parking area.
So mainly for the extent of the human, you see, is really for access into that garage. So being able to come around the corner and then swing into the garage and then also back out and pull through. So really that extent, we have investigated that and that's kind of our limit in order to get the turning into the garage and then out. So it's more about maneuverability in the back there.
Then the only other comment I have is this is not historic property, but it is surrounded by historic land. Miller Steams across the street. So I don't know if you want to refer it to HAPAC or not. The property in the north here does have some historic structure. It's historic state. But this obviously itself is not, since we were due per se for the structure itself more just as any comment we might have, they might have, I should say. Just don't know how it fits in the landscape. But it's a... In the code, if proposal is there for a property that's next to or adjacent to a national registered property, it does actually have to be reviewed by the planning board. We discussed that in pre-con, given for other reasons. But that is in there, so I do think HAPAC should take a look. I think there's some comments, but that's...
So that historic property is mentioned. It just is a long narrow strip because it has actually listed, because it's an ag. So it's part of the agricultural basis. But if you go back to my... It's just the one side. You go up and down. It's this piece right there. That's it. That's part of, that's part of the... Is it Miller Steams across the street? Miller Steams across the street.
Right, so that's the one that would by code trigger planning board review, if nothing else. We didn't discuss that as part of the pre-con. I wonder if you say for other reasons that would... That could have triggered it as well. Again, this property is not historic itself.
This is, this is Miller Steams. I mean, this is...
Oh, that's not... The other property's listed as part of those given past or something. We want to look into that.
And it's not produced.
It's not issued to a national, it's not issued to a national registered property. So I take that back.
And then here's the, this is actually the grade is 1,000 feet.
Right, which is why, right. So I get it, I mean, I'll turn over the planning board if we think that's necessary. Now, you get this property itself in the time of store, but there is history in the area.
Questions, comments, plans, comments?
This box up onto the... Planes, yes. Third tier, correct. And then there's also part of that subdivision that was filed. So there can raise a hundred and forty conservation issues that are located on the west side of the...
That's the big box on the little property on the other side of the grade?
Yes. There's no intention. There's a lot of contours here. And probably more to, so no intention for any disturbance or development.
And that elevated disposal area, is that above the roadway or does it go down and then...
It goes down, just very down here to the roadway. Yeah, I think, you know, we actually have photos. You know, so I have, this is, this is something... If you go back down to... Drawn up a little bit too, so we should have a little issue with the colors. Right, so here's photo one, two, three. So on the left side. And then here, the way the property, the road tree, also a little bit of the property. So you can see that this will be elevated, but there's existing vegetation that that screens it. And then also we're proposing some additional screening option there. So it's, you know, it's a truly, you know, spending time on the property. It's the only available alternative for on-site waste water.
Question. How long do you expect to get final approval of the request?
Well, so historically, the health department requires freeze thaw cycle.
I know you said that, but before everything is approved, what would you expect from that?
Well, in submission of the health department, there's a very close to submission. And so the grading plan, I expect will be approved in two months. And then that allows fill, allows fill to be brought in and constructed as designed. Fill will settle over the winter. And then health department comes out and you record it, you should retest to verify the fill. And then it's approval of, detailed approval of the wastewater compliance and, you know, just details of subterranean pump stations, et cetera. And specific detail with regard to, you know, the comments for the wastewater system. So that probably wouldn't occur until March, April, next year.
So you'd expect it would be approved by the larger people? Or are you saying that's when your plan, when the actual work would begin on this? I don't understand.
The goal, the goal would be to allow the actual work to begin out there for the grading as soon as it's approved officially. And then while this fill settles, it would be, as our, so we have to be able to start construction. And then back in the spring, go back and we test this with the health department and then go back with a final plan that shows the engineering design.
And that would be approved, you would guess, by what month next year? That final plan?
Two months after, oh, months, two months after the frost, it's out of the ground.
So April, the end of April?
April.
And how far along with the house? If you've started the house, if the planning board gives approval, how far along would the house be at that point?
Alex? So we're talking with builders right now. The estimated construction time for the house should be about 15 months. So if we start in fall, given that the foundation's already in the ground and there's minimal sort of excavation work, they can see there aren't anything at all. Probably framing would be up, windows would be in. And it would be, it'd be pretty far along.
The interior would be... The interior walls would be up?
If we were to be able to windows in before the winter was set, then yes, they would be able to certainly do interior walls and partitions and everything. Do have two additional comments. So if the planning board went that way, obviously you would have the conditional approval and they're aware that approval changes anyway with county health. They have to come back.
Understood.
The other one I did forget to mention is we did hear from the building department. And because the foundation has been out exposed for a couple of years, they would like a certification that the foundation is still intact. And if they work, it does what that is as part of the process.
Yeah, we have an engineer engaged, a good instructor engineer for the house. And likewise, they're going to provide our...
So that'll part of a certification as far as the foundation is...
Yes. Our company.
So if the worst thing's worse and there's nothing but a stone mountain under that area where you want to expand the subterranean, the wastewater system. Then in April, you could end up with the walls that create four bedrooms, but you have a subterranean system for two bedrooms. Is that right?
Would you repeat that?
I'm trying to understand what the worst possible situation is. If the planning board were to approve that you could begin construction for final approval of the request.
So part of that is installing like the... And so there's, first of all, so it's all filled. I don't test those through here. They're just over on, this is, this is all filled, that could go in. So that would be, that would be phase one. That would occur this year in order to proceed to the approvals that Duxes County Health Department has.
So you're saying there is no reason to believe that you could not create a wastewater system for bedrooms?
Not at all.
Thank you.
You get it for two, and you just expand it.
Mark, you never get a CO from the town without having health department sign off for that in the event.
That's correct.
So you have a chance. You never get the CO until it's all, all the data is out of these costs.
Right, until the final approval and then you get the CO until the health department discusses also. I know that, you know, I know that I've worked with this board for so many years and I know the policy. So this was a little bit, just because of the time and the subvention for this type of, this type of subs.
Other questions?
Just getting back to the superfill, you're extending just in one direction. You're not going to be elevating.
No, it's going to stay, stay, same height.
Okay, and that's existing, what's on there? So you're going to be extending it by some factor.
Yeah.
Now, if it fails for some reason after the freeze thaw cycle, does that mean you have to go even farther or...
What do you do?
So the freeze thaw cycle is to ensure that there's a one adequate amount of fill. And then the fill is as specified, and just once in. It's essentially going back and doing detest and taking a look, and it's going to be seven feet of cement.
Okay.
Any last, anything more? Do you have a direct procedure resolution?
The direct procedure resolution for the board's consideration tonight for the application by Florence and Gainer Recycle Land and Special Use Perimeter in Capital Chapter 125 for construction of House 531 Hill Road. The RA 10 accepting the application supporting documents as added for further review. Classifying the action as type two under secret for which board need to provide non-quality review is not required. Scheduling a public hearing for July 25th at 6:05. We will send this to the CAB and the WAC. Where does the board's thought set send it to HAPAC? Is it necessary or not? No? Okay. Good, yeah, just discussing. I was off on my site, so we'll take that off. Send it to Duxes County Planning, and we need two planning board members to do a site. You sent with more votes?
Sharon and Thomas. Somebody will be in touch with you. May I have a motion to accept correct procedural resolution?
Someone.
Second, third.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We will now move into the public hearing. Unfortunately, you, this evening, the first public hearing scheduled is at Thomas Daniels Gates Lake, Dr. Lee. This afternoon, we received a request from an applicant to continue the public hearing until the July 15th. Any additional information, Patrick? I don't believe there was any, just that request. So we will honor that request. If you want, I mean, with a motion, please to continue. Second, please.
Second.
Motion and second, all of us in favor.
Aye.
Close motion, please. Second public hearing this evening is at Gretchen Ronder. You can join that call. 563 Primrose Hill Road for a minor subdivision.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Patrick Niguel. I have to reiterate, we're presenting Von Reis and Hall Family, which is all business today. We're talking about a minor subdivision. Kind of a unique property. The current owner's father bought the property over a hundred years ago. It's a family land. 1938, their father provided the plan for construction with IG. And it's been in their family ever since. The last time the project was subdivided was 1993 to allow for Gretchen, her family, to build their family home and remain on the property. And the purpose of this subdivision is a 20-acre property with the existing old farmhouse that poses the current owner's grew up in. They want to take the 20-acre parcel, break three lots out of it. Five acres would be existing house. Five acres that'll be vacant, and 10 acres that the current owner's son and nephew would like to build his house on, stay in the area. But I think it's a pretty, a pretty good project. And we can see it there. Any questions?
Okay, any additional comments? Want some more?
No, well, one just minor comment. We did discuss it, but just wanted to reiterate. I have talked to the zoning administrator. We talked about the sheds that are on the two lots. Or actually, I'm sorry, just on lot two. And that when you do, when someone does come in for a house, if the sheds are the remain, then you require variance for those because they're in front of the house. But I just wanted to reiterate that. But I have talked to the ZA in part of this process. I'm not going to require any changes to that. But for the main issue, happens.
Couple of the members stalled when we were out there. They're, they're pretty broken.
Definitely. So take it down and let me that meet for variance.
All right, so, I guess it was, that's a good report on that. So, okay, would you go along?
No, the least was, was... It's a very simple project. Just dividing it with three lots. I didn't see any problems with any aspect of it. Like you said, the one shed is pretty much on its way out.
But it's two sides, and it's a little bit rough, right?
And credit locate the houses. Done well.
Questions or comments, want to planning board members? May I ask if there's anyone here for the public wishes to comment on this application?
May I ask if there's anyone here for the public officials to comment on this application? Have any public comment? I haven't seen any additional issues discussed. So Jim, do you have a draft approval resolution?
Well, it's going to be a two-parter because it was unlisted. So the first thing we need to do is close the public hearing. The approval of, I'm sorry, the seeker resolution. And then we will get the approval resolution. We have to do it.
Why is, why is that close the public hearing until you go through the-
This is just a paperwork issue because it is an undetermined type of process under seeker. It just requires us to go through part two. There's a part two, just asked the board to answer a couple of questions related to this proposal on whether or not no or small impact may occur or moderate to large impact may occur. This is not like our type ones. This is a quick one, two. So the first question would be, will the proposed action create material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? No or small impact?
No or small.
No or small. So we're in a great place. No or small.
Will the action result in a change in the use or intensity of the land?
No.
No or small? Will the proposed action appear of the character of quality against the community? Will the proposed action have impacts on the environmental characteristics established under the C E A? The answer is no, because we don't have one in the town. Will the proposed action result in adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, walking?
No.
Will the action cause an increase in the use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Will the action impact existing public, private water supplies or wastewater treatment utilities? Will the action impair the character of quality in important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? Will the proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources? Will it result in increase in potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? And will it create a hazard to environmental resources, human health?
No. Okay, thank you.
Jim, can you explain again maybe why it was necessary?
This is an unlisted action, not a type two. So as an unlisted action, we should be going through-
And why is it an unlisted?
Seeker has a specific list of actions that take place whether they're type one, type two.
It's a subdivision.
Right, subdivision is not specific.
Right, thanks very much.
So with that then, I would ask-
Let me make a motion and ask for a motion for the public. So who? Second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye. Part two of this three-part approval process will just be a seeker resolution as an unlisted action. We did just go through the part two form, but we need to have it in writing that you did approve the form. So subject to this is saying the action seeking approval for the minor subdivision, a 20-acre lot and three lots, one of the five acres, including existing residence, two new lots, lots of new residents, as one of which contains two sheds. Town ordinance rules as lead agent standard seeker and upon review of the short E A F associated information, hereby issued negative declaration, deemed environmental fact statement is not required. Stating such will not be prepared in consideration of the minor subdivision. And in taking this action, planning board approves the project to report and proposed actions appear by proof of implementation subject to our approval resolution, which comes next.
And your motion? So will, second? Would you like to propose a motion?
And now part three is our typical approval resolution. This is for the minor subdivision for Bobby Leithman Hall for subdivision in Calico Chapter 101. The subdivision in the existing lot, in the three lots, 563 Primrose Hill Road. Reaffirming prior classification is unlisted and noting that we have done seeker, and we have in our possession seeker short forms, parts one, two, and three. Based upon the previous submitted information, including the reports to planning board members on the site visit, finally proposed works consistent with the objectives stated in Chapter 101. With respect to the minor subdivision, we're asking the board to approve the application inclusive of the plan sheets prepared by Patrick Niguel dated April 21st, 2024. We have the note here about the two sheds and possibly improve variance. And then we're authorizing the planning board chair's stamp and signing both sides of site plan subject to those board instructions.
Comments, questions? May I make a motion to accept the direct approval resolution? So both my chair and-
Second.
Second by very long planning board chair. Aye. Frank.
Aye.
Edna. Aye.
Aye.
I like your line. Lovely your project.
Thank you very much.
The third public hearing this evening is for the Wondert one, we have the board's site that is used perfectly.
Good evening, chairman, planning board. I am representing the Institute for Apes and my partner Rebecca Warren. Submitted in the last year, we purchased this property in February of 2023. So occupancy in June of 2023. And are in the process of renovating said property. Probably over the next two, just eight years. There's 22 acres or 29, four acres. It's zoned, ag rez. And our aim with the institute, we rescue and give sanctuary to disabled, special needs chickens and now ducks. And then we also do humane education. And we also have a food program to help folks that are food skills, so to speak, and we do that with the Wondert property. So we're looking to, I guess, essentially expand to add four coop or shed structures and then four additional runs for those structures. Excuse me, there's actually a fifth one that I didn't include. So the total new structures are five. There's an existing barn. And there's some discussion too, to kind of establish here whether we do four runs at 24 by 24 feet, square feet, or we do, if we need to, because it's not allowed, do eight runs at 12 by 12. So I talked about during our site visits, you know, we, we are owning land in the sense that we don't use pesticides. We don't grow. We don't cut down trees. It's an habitat. There's almost 16 acres of woodlands. It's wetlands and the creek that runs through there. We think that that area needs to be preserved for both our land and also for the benefit we can. So I have to know.
New information, so we determine flood payment will not be required. That's why I run that downtown. So being administrator, I think we're at the point, we submitted some new information, potential different layouts of the runs, which is new, we talked about last time. I think the only real concern I had last time is just the existence of the sheds in front of the house. But I hear a point, just seek a variance for those from the C V A. Remove them, part of those are the two options we have. And I believe you're saying we're going to remove those by type opposite.
No, no, thank you. Thanks for letting me know. So it's, so we don't want to go through, you know, the C V A because we need to get moving forward. During the site visit, there was some discussion about this. And I don't know if anybody on the planning board wants to come.
Well, I was for a report on the site. So, you know, I'm sure you may find it over there now. People who do the site visit would like to comment on their visit at this point.
Okay. We went to the site on Friday with the head of Downpours. Love you. In the dry conditions. There are the two sheep shins, I guess you call them, that are in front of the house.
Yes, sir.
And basically just roofed structures. They don't have any walls.
Correct.
But from what I understand, the roof structures count, even though they don't have walls. And you had said that you were interested in these taking, either taking them down entirely or taking the roofs off them. Maybe at some point using them to bring in sheep. I wasn't really clear what the ultimate disposition of those was going to be. And then you had a number of smaller, kind of ticket booth sized chicken booths that you had paved on the property that you were intent on using if you weren't allowed to build the 24-foot wide structures with the long runs.
Can we, can you, correction, I'm sorry. Can you show, you know, show that? So these, these two exist. They have electricity to them. And then we have electricity run off the same line back to these two. And I know it's hard to discern.
Right.
But so the ones that are sitting in front of the barn now, we're going to move two of them to these spots.
Right.
And then the runs, we were thinking something, I mean, these animals, this is where they're going to live all their life with predators and zoonotic diseases and things. So we try to give them the best quality of life that we can. And so they are, they are protected within that structure. It's a real structure. And, but I didn't know if I could build up to 24 by 24 or not. It was unclear to be, with our back and forth, although it was allowed. And so that site visit, I said, no. I think I'm going to ask for the max that I can do. And depending on what the planning board and Jim, the guidance on, then I'm going to go from there. If you tell me you can only do max 244 square feet, then I'm going to do 12 by 12. But then there's deal. But then-
And one of the things that I was trying to get clear on was what you're talking about as runs is not just a fenced area where the chickens can run. This is actually another roof structure.
It's another roof structure.
Similar in nature to what you have in the front that are going to be abandoned. And then in terms of accessory structures, you've got two that are constructed that have electricity to them. You're going to bring in two others of undetermined as the outside. Those are also going to have electrical service. You're going to have the runs between them, which is a rigid roof structure, not an awning or a tarp or anything like that. It's going to be a rigid roof structure. All of that square footage counts for the allowable aggregate total.
Correct.
Which from what I understand is, it's RA 10 is your zoning?
Yes, sir.
And I think, incorrect if I'm wrong, isn't there 300 square foot per acre?
Yes. 6300.
So 6300. And your barn also counts for that.
Correct.
Aggregate. So I don't know how the arithmetic works out. And I was, I did mention to you that, you know, we need to be clear on what it is that you want to do. So I don't think I know that yet. I understand about the chickens and raising them. You're not raising them as a market commodity.
Correct.
You're raising them as a humane exercise in preserving and enhancing their life.
Yes, sir. Jim, can you go through the site plan? Yeah, so as it stands now, that's how the configuration is going to look. When you were there on Friday, those two were over here. So all the square footage has been mapped out for that. So, and that is the total, which 12 structures, including this one, is 4798. If I go to 12 by 12, so if these go from four to eight, the square footage actually goes down by about 1,000 square feet. I know math is hard.
Can you do a comment?
Well, I still want to understand all this.
I didn't feel one.
What is the maximum square feet without going through variance for all of these buildings?
The maximum square feet that can be put on this site based on acreage is 6,300 accessory structure.
And how many do you have? How many square feet do you have without dividing building from runs up?
Right now, with this diagram here, it's 4798 for all 12 structures. Three of those. And that includes the range that we're talking about.
So there doesn't seem to be an issue, does there, on square footage?
There's no issue on square footage.
What is the issue?
My only discussion with board was just the same, we needed a flood payment permit. For, I'm not sure, so before today, when we received these, I didn't, I'm not sure where the discussion of four versus eight came from myself. I have a lot of time to dig into this today from when I got it. But discussion has always been, you know, the co-op structures and then the runs. I guess I didn't realize myself the runs were going to be covered. Other ones were fenced area, as we're discussing. But then we're always talking about this larger square footage of building structure. We never kind of, never really put it together. So we have that now. But technically, we are under the square footage, but we are talking about, you know, 4,700 square feet accessory structure. But it is considered ag, and that's part of it.
And the runs have, do they have walls?
They'll have hardware clock. Like with post beams, there's, there are some posts that are already that are buried for, so I'm going to use some of that.
And what is your preference on fewer rather than more runs?
You know, it's interesting, when I was talking to Craig, he was there, you know, Craig talked about lift. These, when we had our sanctuary with these same, some of those buildings on, I am on road and Woodstock, we really went through some storms and they didn't go anywhere. So I'm going to build them to hurt the capacity. And so to answer your question, I'd probably do something in the middle. Maybe more like a 12-plus runs, but then a longer length. But, and that's-
So we need to see here exactly what you want to do?
Part of the confusion I think is coming that Mr. Normal had asked for a waiver from the full site plan requirements. So we do have these existing condition sheet, which we provide and then we're bringing up a minor changes to, and that's not a problem. But what we're looking at here is this, this sheet of the existing conditions. And then in our minds, trying to just kind of place where each of these sit on the site plan itself. So, right, if you can explain how these fit into, you know, the site plan itself?
Yeah, so do you wish to? And Depper has updated this a couple of times, and I'm going to wait till after this meeting to get clarity. And then we're going to update this one by one. So right now, what you're looking at are the two existing coops and the two proposed coops that we're going to move. And then the runs aren't in here. Just again, I'm going to wait till after this meeting. To answer your question, if there is a problem with me doing 24 by 24, then that's where I'm going to go. If you come back to me and say, because of the 144, I thought I saw that in a lot of, you know, the responses. You're saying I can only do 12, then I'm going to do 12. And I'm happy with that.
Am I hearing that you intend to work on this plan since we're in this meeting? Is that what I just understood, where you said that Depper was working on some modifications or clarifications?
I, what I needed to know after was, was whether I could build up to a 24 by 24 run and do four runs? Or if that wasn't allowed? And particularly, whatever you tell me tonight, that I'm going to do.
And is any of this going to be visible from off your apartment?
Now, we're surrounded by horse and cattle. I mean, you could- Now, we're surrounded by forest, and I mean, you could, when you drive by, you could see these, but this is, I don't know, at least four or five hundred feet back. There's a barn over here, and it's tucked back pretty far. And, you know, I've also got a letter of support from our neighbor that's close to us, Richard, and he has no problem.
So, it's like some kind of agreement in principle is being asked for, whether we, you know, would look favorably upon this size.
Right.
And then you were going to redo the site plan or some of these drawings, and then come back to us for final approval?
I think so, yeah. We, we talked, I think of, I was hoping, because I'd like to get going on this, but I think that's unrealistic and stuff, so, so, we're going to do one here.
And just so I'm clear again, the 24 by 24 is one of the runs that you're talking about, it's not, you're not going to put a building that's 24 feet.
No, I'm sorry.
24 feet.
But they all have roofs, you know, they have a roof.
Right. And that's going to be a corrugated plastic kind of thing, or fiberglass, or something.
Yeah, it's a kind of, that, or metal, or.
You go to, what it is?
Okay.
At the end of the, the fire on these applications is through what you want to do. And using landscape cloth, document, you're using that as well?
I'm sorry?
Did you mention the landscape cloth?
Hardware cloth, so it is.
Okay. The drawing.
Yeah, I figured, what do I do?
Be helpful, 24 by 24 run.
Well, I think basics of, yeah.
And also, it, what's the height of the, of the ridge and the eaves? Is it a sloped structure? Is this going to be taller for chickens, or people are going to be able to walk in?
People are going to be able to walk in, but it's not going to be like a 12-foot, you know, and, yeah, lower to the ground, because it's also, I'm not, I'm not a bank manager.
And you're going to be putting, just posts into the ground, you're not putting a footing in, or anything like that?
It's going to be secure.
Well, he's got, he's got full building permits, so they have to be built to the standards that are required by the town building permit for accessory structure.
Right.
Roof accessory structure.
And it's an 11-foot floor, is that correct?
Yes, natural. It's grass back there. You know, have pads for the crews that are going to work back there. Again, the electrical, when you saw, it's like, as you can see, the AC's sticking up, so just wait until they go forward.
Want to reiterate? So, we went here for the public, we should be calling on the staff. Yes, we should call for the local, please.
So, my name is Drake Mariado. My, my question is, how long, what's the lifetime of the space that the chickens will be using, and how often, or how many, how, wouldn't they have to be moved because the chickens mess up the grass? And where would you be putting them after that, as far as what we see when we drive past your property?
Thank you for the question.
If I understand the question correctly, I mean, any animal that uses a pasture space is going to, is going to be a work terror. Chickens will eventually, you know, use the grass, and then it turns into dirt. But that's, that's common, the dust bane, and, I mean, you have chickens, you know, so this is kind of what they do. My, my guess is, there's going to be a combination of, there'll always be some grass there, in some areas that won't. But we don't free range our chickens, like a lot of folks do. We've, we've rescued over, I think, almost 60 chickens and now dogs since we've been doing this. And we haven't lost one, you know, to predators. And trust me, they're there. We've had box come in and died by, like Rebecca, that's been holding for birds before, so, so, and also, I mean, that's just, that's what we do.
So, the answer, I believe, to answer her question, I mean, I think you can look online, and there are many chicken coops, like she said, that are going to be moved around to prevent that sort of erosion of the barn. But the answer to her question relative to your application is, these, you have no intention of moving.
No, they're permanent.
These are in place, they are staying in that place permanent.
Yes, yes.
As long as your operation is intact.
Correct.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
So, anyone else? All right, so, I think we're looking to have a motion to continue the public hearing of July 15th.
May I ask?
Yeah.
You were there.
Yes.
And you still have a general idea of the location of all of this?
Yes.
So, is there any visibility from the road?
It's not prominent. As he says, if you were to drive by and look straight up the driveway, you would probably see the two buildings in front, and then everything seems to happen in this fenced area behind that. But it is pretty far within the perimeter of the, of the property. So, it, it's not going to be distracting, but you wouldn't be able to see it from the roadway.
Is there any landscaping that would help?
I, I don't, I don't know.
If I could expand on that, I mean, we care about aesthetics. If anybody's familiar with the property, it's, it needs some work, and, and over time, we're going to do that. So, one of the reasons that we've, we've structured this the way we have, is so things are tucked in, everything is going to be uniform, aesthetically pleasing relative to, you know, the sanctuary. The two coops that are in the front were for grass barns, and so they're new, and because, as some people say, they wanted, I think it's a tiny house, the way it's finished, so it's.
Yeah, we wouldn't go too far down that road. We're not doing that. Because they are sheet locked on the inside and finished, and they have electricity, and, you know, what this is likely to turn into, I think, might also become a consideration if people want to camp out in there, but.
That changes the complexion of the property.
Absolutely, no.
And two.
That's a cool thing.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I mean, we only, like, each coop has a max of four to five chickens. So, we just, this is not a factory farm, or we're overcrowding, it's just, that's not overall.
Anyone else from the public? If there's nothing else, may I hear that motion to continue the public hearing?
No room.
Second, please. Almost in favor?
I. Bob, what do you think of next? I think, give us your proposal, what you want to do, because right now, we have the two scenarios in front of us, I think we just need the one, because it makes it very complicated, and we have to, and there's, you know, the motion for the site, so.
Okay. And last, I can forget.
Best and final.
With the, with this one here, after the site visit, does everybody think this needs to go still, or?
Anything that's in front of the house, accessory structure, has to go on this one, there is, that's not a, that's not for this board to decide, you know, the variance to work, so.
Okay.
If it's in front of the house, again, it needs to be shown on the plan, it's either being removed or staying, you're going to get a variance. If you get a variance, that will go along this process.
Okay, so, thank you very much. Can I, can I have 30 days to take that down?
In terms of removing it, it has something to talk to the zoning administrator about, but I could work with you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next, there, excuse me, public hearing this evening is out of Lawrence Lakeport, 7112 Drive, Site Plan, Special, by that kind of evolution of existing second family bond, construction of the new second.
Thank you very much. Hi, thanks so much for having us back. I want to say, I know you're a little short with this, and you see how long it's been, how long it is. I want to first start with the fact that, having worked with your guidelines, and like, interacted with you on related guidelines that allow for really people to express themselves and live within their guidelines. I'd like to thank Edna, and Craig, and Tom for coming to visit 7113, you know, questions about the importance of this structure continuing the historic story of Rhine Cliff. The historic, I'm not sure how to pronounce their initials, AIPAC, Maria Rosenblum and Catherine Wilton came to see the property and to see the model from the presentation, and they submitted a report to us, which, you know, really was very heartening to us because they understood that we had also very difficult, how do you extend the spirit of Rhine Cliff and create something of you? And so, I mean, they didn't say that we created something of you, but they did say that there was no contributing factor to the history of Rhine Cliff or the main planning 7113, and they believed that we exceeded the recommended guidelines in every aspect. And they made a few creative suggestions that frankly were thrilling to me. You know our story, we raised our grandchildren in this house on 67, we want to be near them and our children in 71, in a house where my husband, Lauren Lakeborn, is here today, not in the hospital, but he goes to the hospital. But we need an ADA house that can accommodate us as we reach. You're all so young, you don't understand that. But, and we're going to go quickly through this presentation. John Powell is partners with Ryan Cliff on the project, as you know, Mike, Doug is not being able to meet there tonight. Don lives in Hudson Valley, so it is a very productive discussion.
So, the file that's on the screen right now is actually the revision that we submitted since our last presentation, and there's a few changes I wanted to walk you through. Remember, AIPAC has a house, they saw the model, which shows the balcony being cantilevered, and in our previous presentation, we had grounded that balcony, assuming that AIPAC would like that better, but they actually wrote us a letter in support of the cantilever. So, we do put that back into the design. And so, all the pages associated in this file, all the pages in this file are just associated with that shape, which is a little over here. And then, the other thing they asked us to do, based on some feedback that we received, was to build the stone wall that's 10 feet back from the street, huddled dry-laid stacked stone, rather than stones set in order. So, we updated the principal elevation of the rendering to show how that wall would look. So, that, like, in the previous presentation that you saw, this wall had bigger stones set in order, and now we're just representing it as a dry-laid stacked stone wall to be more, to match other walls in the context. And we, you had asked me the last time we were here, if we needed to get Highway Department approval for this wall, and I got a note back from Robert Wyatt, saying that as long as it's 10 feet back from the road, he's fine. So, that's, that's the only change since last time?
No comments? Essentially the same as we had since we started this, the same from a planning perspective. Probably the issues related to aesthetics, like the start of preservation and consistency with the neighborhood and location. Otherwise, you know, maybe not as an AIPAC, that right order.
So, start with one report from those who came to site visit, please.
I went with Edna and with Tom to look at the site, and I have to say, I really cannot support tear downs. I really think that it's wrong for someone to move to a historic town and tear down a part of it to build something that they want. I, I don't think that that's a good way to practice historic preservation. And I, I understand this is a, this is not a contributing structure to the National Registry District, but if this is the fate of every non-contributing structure, then, you know, we're in, we're in for a big building boom in Rhine Cliff. And I worry about the integrity of the historic district. I don't recall if there are any cantilevers anywhere in the district to be found. And largely, I understand Rhine Cliff, the hamlet, as being a vernacular, working-class neighborhood, and this, it, it could be very beautiful, and in reality, I think it could be disjunct from its surroundings and its context. And we puzzle over putting a, putting a heat pump on a, on a roof in Rhine Cliff, you know, it, it's something that we think very carefully about, and I, I think we should proceed very cautiously in tearing down a very, building that's not hurting anyone, to build something very grand. So, that, that's my, that's my take on it. Edna, I think you had a somewhat different perspective.
Yes, I, I have a very different perspective from all kinds of points of view. I do have, I'm going to have a number of questions, but we can, I guess, view a perspective first. I don't know how this board would use the ability to take down a house that we toured, and is clearly a bare bones mid-century ranch that would take a lot of money to be made livable, and probably an expansion of some kind. You know, it's, it's a brick veneer ranch. We went through it, I, I was looking for anything in there that might be recycled, renewed cabinetry or something, but there was nothing, and I think you agree with that, that there really wasn't anything to be recycled. And I don't feel the proposed house is in any way grand, or obnoxious, or calling attention to itself. I think it's a beautiful design, it is contemporary, but I don't think it's what you would call hard contemporary in any way. Let me start with some questions. If we go to the site plan.
Yes. That would be in the other file. One second.
I'll send you the supplement.
You can, define the sentence.
So, you can use this page, there's also a page further into the file, this.
I want, yeah, that's the page that I want. You, I want to see that drawing that's in the lower break. Yeah, that, okay.
No, we, we were considering using it for cantilevers.
Oh, well, that's what it states on the site plan, that it will be reused. Will it be reused?
That's what it says on the site plan.
Okay. How, the basement, you can see the paint drawing there of where the basement is. And the garage sits on top of it, as does the breezeway and part of the house. And the basement is a cinder block basement, which you suggested wouldn't let water in, you know, which is in no condition to be used as a basement. So then the question in my mind was, if it's not going to be used, is it going to be filled? Are you going to bring in fill or are you going to use a portion of it? Are you going to, if you use a portion of it, are you going to change the walls of the basement? And then how would you access it?
So the, I mean, I think this is a comment that was part of the original proposal when we were concerned about just doing more excavations on the site. I think now, because we've decided to build an all-electric building, we don't really need a mechanical room in the traditional sense, so the best thing to do would be to fill it and abandon the existing cinder block foundation.
Okay, so you will be bringing in some kind of fill. And do you know how much?
I don't have the, I think you had suggested maybe trying to use some of the materials from the old houses still.
No, I didn't suggest that.
I think that, I mean, that is something that we could look into is to have the materials from the house turned pulverized and turned to fill in order to kind of keep the sustainability of the piece of wood.
Jim, do we have to know, you know, if fill's going to be brought in, what it's going to be and how much will be brought in?
If there's fill coming in, we should know. I mean, that's all part of this discussion, you know, in terms of whether keeping a basement or digging one out or moving fill, that's the big one. Remember digging stuff out and taking fill off the site, whether you're moving from the site or you're putting somewhere else and spreading it around. But generally, yes, we like to build that information.
Well, that's some of the information that we see.
So the, I think what we would like to do is fill it in and build it up. And it's about ten feet wide, which is what we're looking for in that house.
Okay. We also.
It's, yeah, it's a twenty-four by ten, so we can do a huge amount.
Is there anybody here with a mathematical brain? Nick, can you figure that out in your head?
Could we continue?
Sure.
We talked about the recycling of the asphalt driveway and parking area. So is that part of the, is there going to be done?
The plan would be to remove, remove the existing driveway and replace it with a permeable asphalt.
And you will recycle the asphalt, correct?
In terms of, like, the demolition contractor would recycle the asphalt.
Okay. This was something that came up during the site visit. You're also thinking of removing the core old wastewater system or septic?
There's a cesspool on the north end of the site.
In your point?
It's the existing manor. It's on the existing.
And so that'll be, there'll be excavation there to get that and to remove it.
Correct.
Okay. And when you look at the, the wastewater system, the access to get in there, I guess, is off the road? Is that it?
Down here.
Right.
Like for, for a maintenance vehicle?
For creating that field, those fields.
Yes, I think they, you can access the property right here. There's actually an existing, if you go to the.
There's always an old driveway.
Yeah, there's an existing driveway there.
There is an existing driveway. And the mature trees that are next to the road there are at a slightly lower level, right, than the septic fields.
That's right. Yeah, these, I think these, these line representatives of protection, so they're, they're sort of on a steep slope going down towards nowhere.
Yeah, I was just concerned about, because there is going to be some movement of soil back and forth. It's a relatively small parcel, you know, between a couple of roads and there's always the issue of dirt going on through the road. All of that needs to be thought about and taken care of.
Yeah, I think they would put it in myself as the way of construction.
Yeah, but moving just, you know, trucks going back and forth, I think it's dirt. The other impression that I had is those mature trees, they're very dense. And, you know, there's this discussion about the breezeway being an opening that allows a view to the west, but the view to the west is completely blocked. And there are wonderful arborists who are actually able to do expert pruning that actually gives the health of the trees, but allows just a little, you know, light through that.
These trees have not been going through very light.
But if that is the plan, then you should let us know that and you should let us know if you do that.
That's all I heard. Okay. If you have any comments?
I drove around Rhine Cliff after the visit. I could not find a comparable house to that. So as far as historically, you know, keeping it the same, most of the ranch styles along the river, they look to be from the seventies, so, but in the historical sense, I couldn't see where that adds or detracts from what's there. So, and then it's structural, I couldn't see any, you could do it, but we don't know what's going on.
You're talking about current ranches.
Yeah, current ranches. It's in bad shape. But I couldn't find any, I drove around down there for about forty-five minutes and I couldn't find anything to say, well, this kind of, this continuation of homes built at that time.
No, and it doesn't have, it doesn't, it isn't in the proportion of what we, our building is delicate. It's, as Edna said, it's not the interface to a modern building. It's a very delicate building that has the same tilt of roof that others have. I, I appreciate Craig's opinion of building, having grown up in a mid-century house, but our mid-century house is well-maintained and still stands, but it was designed by an architect and it was beautifully built. But I think that you're clear of, this is not a man-made building. It's not real, it's not a man-made building. Why don't we see how our community is feeling?
Any more, yeah. Just listening to what everybody has to say. I don't hear any comments.
Sure.
I have a concern about this existing entrance off of the state highway. That's a really bad section of the road. I go by it every day. I never knew there was an entrance there because I go and I've been looking up to see what I could see of the house and couldn't see if any could go. I wouldn't want to be bothered now when the train's coming in and the body's twenty-sixty miles an hour because they're late for the train. So that's one issue. The other issue was the septic, proposed septic system. The line shows that it's sixty-five feet from the state highway up to the house and drop off those from eighty feet down to maybe sixty feet up there. And the septic system is about halfway down this very steep hill, which doesn't seem right to be too good. Does the county have to clean it up?
It's terraced.
There's an area in back of the house that's relatively flat. Then you come to a very steep incline. And then this is flat area where the fields will be created.
Does the county have to clean the septic?
The county has to.
So, actually Mark was here later as the engineer, took the location of the septic areas, but it hasn't been reviewed.
So we don't have Health Department approval on it.
The Health Department came, like Mark was there, and maybe they didn't certify it. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
They generally thought Mark had the right idea, that we didn't.
My understanding.
What we're looking for is something in Maryland that's there somewhere. So the conversation between Mark and the Health Department is great, but we'll be definitely, you know, that's it.
I didn't see any implications of a deep test had been done to check for the depth to rock or groundwater unless it was done some time ago and it's overgrown.
It was done last year.
Okay, so more than a year ago and they did do a successful deep test?
Yep.
If you plan to use Rhine Cliff Road as a construction access, you might have to, yeah, I don't know the answer, you might have to get temporary access permit from DOT to do that. So Sharon answered your question in terms of truck traffic, getting it out, they're going to have to give permission from DOT if, and so they'll have to, you know, do whatever DOT says in terms of protection of maintenance and traffic if they have concerns there. But that would be DOT's realm, see what goes on if you wanted to use that. But that, let's check with DOT and see if they're asking.
Our intention is not to use it if not, if it's not needed for construction.
That's what I thought we discussed earlier.
And that, and it's definitely not something we're proposing to have when the project's done.
I would never, who said it's a drawdown?
Yeah.
Downhill. Anything else?
I just wanted to, I think, Edna, you had kind of asked, I think you had asked a question about how planning work makes a decision on this effectively. And it really all comes down to the criteria in one twenty-five sixty-nine, which is the Rhine Cliff Old Village District, section eight. And that specifically talks about the site, especially use permit, site plan approval process, concept plan, endless objectives and guidelines, as well as talking about the objectives for new construction. So the board really needs to take a look at that section and, you know, see how you feel this is compatible or not with, you know, those guidelines there. I think we have talked about Garcia in the past. Your take on that. But that's, that's where it falls in terms of your guidance.
We will burn out there anyway, right? Because we need to renew for septic and so forth.
Right, yeah, we've got a couple of comments on it, yeah, but just in terms of the board would hope that would be section two.
Does the demo have to wait for septic to be built?
It's a whole plan, such as to wait for, I mean, because it's before the board right now, really don't think it should happen on the site.
But I think also, because it's listed historic building, I don't think they need to pursue the demolition permit. If it were listed on the National Register or a local landmark, then they would have to pursue the demolition permit. The one other thing I wanted to add, I know we're going to have a discussion later on about our fourth housing. And when I first moved to this area almost thirty years ago, shopkeepers, bartenders, waitresses lived in Rhine Cliff and they lived, they rented houses like this little ranch house. And I do work at Old Villings as a profession and I can smell, you know, and I, this did not, this did not have the odor of death as some houses do. So I, you know, I think, I think there, I, the reason for demolishing this building is to build something else. I don't think it has to come down for other reasons.
So you did look, and you brought up an interesting, you brought up the, someone asked about this at the last meeting, we just talked about this. We did do some embodied carbon calculations for this and, like, if we build a, you know, a new, all-electric, air-sealed home, almost a passive house, specifications, we actually make up the difference in just a handful of years with the demolition. And part of the reason for that is, is just because this house right now is just sucking up so much energy. I mean, to really like air-seal this house, you know, it's sitting on cinder blocks, it has an underbelly, like, to really air-seal this current house, we'd be basically having to demolish it. You know, there's no, it has porous materials on the outside, it has porous materials below it, above it, it, you know, it would, and you'd have to decommission the oil, they're all-electric, it's basically like building a new house anyway, to make it, to make it, you know, to make it energy efficient.
Right. And I don't want to, I don't want to belabor the point, I've kind of given up on saving this house for any purpose, but I think there's an interesting discussion that can be had as far as, you know, we're seeing a lot of applications for people adding heat pumps to older houses, which is a great way to lower that energy propligacy, propligacy that you see with older buildings and things like cellulose insulation in the attic. Can be improvements that you're going to be making to the new house, but they can also be applied to existing housing structures. So I think it's a serious discussion that we need to be engaged in. So I, I hear you.
Any other things? I have more comments, but I'll hold them.
Either that, unless you have something else to add, we've been looking at this point of comments from the public. I can see a number of you here interested in this, I was just sort of thinking about how we go about public hearings when there's a lot of comment. Ask you to come in, might apply, identify yourself, probably at Andrew address. We try to keep our comments between three, four minutes. If they've already got any, we ask you to continue on, let somebody make the next comment. So with that being said, yes, sir, you will be the person to talk.
Then leave then.
Hello. My name, my name is Joseph Mareska. I live about seventeen yards from this road, the only other ugly ranch house that you obviously missed when you were young. And I got to tell you, I'd hate to, if I could afford to have an improvement to make my house more aesthetically pleasing, I don't want to live in amber. A house, you know, instilled in amber that I couldn't change, especially if I wanted to make something that was as sensitive and as elegantly designed as the Lakeborns tried to do and have done. The root, very critical person, a painter or an aesthetic person, and I found that there might be things that might not be my taste, but they went to hell to get the roof lines to fit with the rest of the strange roof lines that we have in Rhine Cliff. I think it's a wonderful job and I think it sort of ends the town beautifully, but that's just me. Again, I don't want to But that's just me. Again, I don't want to live in, I understand your point, I know what you mean. But my house is a dump, I'd love to get rid of it. But, you know, it's what I thought, but I don't want to live in amber in that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joseph, your house isn't that bad. Richard Kupaschinsky, I live in Rhine Cliff. I don't know where to start, but Craig, it's an interesting observation that you think that no, nobody can come in and take down something. And to, to build something else, I mean, that's, that's hard because there are some places in Rhine Cliff that should be taken down. I mean, this house has nothing to do with Rhine Cliff, the house they want to take down, in my opinion. It's, it's something that, it's something, it's something that they built in Westchester in nineteen fifty or sixties where I grew up. And it was, it has nothing to do with historic Rhine. So, and there's, you know, there's a, a trailer type building across from Morton Library that was built in nineteen sixties that was Conklin Sugar Bowl. Now, I wanted to take that down. If I had my drivers, I would have had the library get the building, take it down and get more parking for Rhine Cliff, for, for the light work. Now, that would make sense to me because that house doesn't fit in either. Though we would have lost a couple of really nice people living in Rhine Cliff. But anyway, I, I don't know to say other than I, I don't think that house belongs in Rhine Cliff. I think the Laborn's have done a great job on their first house that they bought and they, they're very sensitive to where we live. They kept the front of the property, the front of the house that they're living in now. The old style that Pat Hayes had, never changed. And they, they did something a little bit more modern, but they hid it in the back and maybe you saw it from the train station and stuff like that. I think it is not grandiose, in my opinion. It is a sensible house, I think it belongs. To your point about affordable, where people live in Rhine Cliff, Rhine Cliff still is affordable. And affordable housing, I supply a lot of it because I have a lot of apartments. And the rents are very low and so we still have nurses and bar professors and people working at Fern Cliff. They're still living in Rhine Cliff. Maybe they're not living in a ranch house or a grandiose house, but they're still living in Rhine. I think, I think the project is a good project and I, I would like to support it.
My name is Joan Bobb. I currently live at fifty-nine Orchard Drive, having lived at sixty Orchard Drive and one hundredth Street. I've never left, left a very tiny perimeter around, in fact, the Laborn's house. This house, seventy-one, always struck me as a singularly ugly house. It has a beautiful tree in front of it. And the tree remains a feature of the house as it will be. The singularly ugly house was also, is also brick. And I know from my experience in England and read a lot of English newspapers, that brick with global warming is not a good fit. It's really cold and does nothing to protect people from great heat. So what this plan does to bring the house, to make the house electric and to make the house global warming compatible shows foresight as well as the beauty of what the house is going to be and the way it is going to fit into this strange place that is Rhine Cliff. It was worker housing for people who were on the job. Thank you. It's a beautiful house.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Susan Ray. I'm at seventy-two Orchard Drive, right across the street. And I think this is a thing of real beauty that would be a source of pride in Rhine Cliff. This is, it's a beautiful house. I also have to say that I question any reservation about tearing down the house across the street. I love the people who lived in it before, but the house is a brick. It doesn't, it doesn't represent the town well, I don't think. And I think this will, I, I really hope it, it can be built. It's a beautiful house. I would be very happy with it possible.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Margaret Lee and I live right up the hill on fourteen hundredth Street. And I've been in Rhine Cliff for the last I always say ten, but I think it's closer to twelve now. I love it there. I totally hear what you're saying, right? But I too, I spend a lot of time when I'm in Rhine Cliff, walking the streets. And I find that I really appreciate the historical nature of the whole area, really. But Rhine Cliff, I think, is changing in a way I don't think a lot of us, I've noticed, want to sort of embrace. And that's that it has some lovely still old homes, as Richard noted, places where a lot of people could live, all lost flying. But it's also, also expanding and there are a lot of homes that have been redone and a lot of homes that have been modeled. And it's, it's very exciting to see what sometimes I feel, because I've been working hard to sort of promote and it's, it's happening now, a little pocket park in the center of town. Because it feels like, sometimes I feel like, I came from a big family, so sometimes I feel like Rhine Cliff is, is a little bit forgotten. And, but it's not anymore. And, and this house is another example of that. I do walk by the house the way it is now. And it's, it's a, it's a house that needs some, it's, it's a, it's not a dry it's, it is falling apart and it, and this is something that is, it looks totally organic to the, to the landscape. It's, it would be so much a part, if you go up, you can see it, my home included is, is now a modern farmhouse. It was, I think it was torn down by the old house and it's not that, it's not that, it's a disrespect to history. Because it's not, but some houses just aren't, they just don't have the stamina to withstand many hundreds of years. Some do and those we all appreciate. This really needs, just something like this being built in that area, I think, could just enhance Rhine Cliff. And enhance what's already happening there. There's a lot of growth, again, and I don't think it's embraced as much as, I don't think we should fight it as much as sometimes I think we do. And be included, so I'm all for it.
My name is Matt Lysenberg. I submitted a two-page letter to I haven't actually spoken at one of these since about twenty-fourteen, when I was decisively against construction of an old house in Rhine Cliff. For, and neither reasons, Greg, aside, because I am two in favor in general to tear down houses. Even if someone sees them ugly, I mean, some of the houses in Rhine Cliff are very modest and people might think they're all tear downs. But in this case, you know, having looked at this a lot and looked at the, yes, it's a contemporary house, but looking at the design and unlike Roy's here in twenty-fourteen, this design, I think, has taken some of what is important to handling and embraced it instead of turning its back on it. And I mentioned in my letter, the fact that there's a front porch, the fact that the house is actually narrower when you look at it because they reoriented it from north, south to east, west. You know, most people building a modern house would probably forget about the side that faces the street when you have the incredible river view. They didn't, the, the house is open to the street, it's friendly to the neighborhood. So as an intended house, I think it really would work in Rhine Cliff. As far as the houses there now, most of the houses in Rhine Cliff are nineteenth century houses. There are a number of houses that have been built over the decades, obviously not everything was built in eighteen ninety, eighteen eighty. And almost all of the contributing houses to the historic district are nineteenth century houses. So if this was a nineteenth century modest house they wanted to tear down, it wouldn't be speaking here. I think that this, the house that's there now, I mean, I know some people say it's ugly, I think it's ugly, that's kind of irrelevant. It doesn't really fit the style of Rhine Cliff and if you're going to take down a few houses, that one seems appropriate to be replaced with something that is yes, it's going to be contemporary because very few people are just going to copy a nineteenth century style. But at least if you're going to do it, do it well, and this house does it well. It, it, it really is friendly to Rhine Cliff while still being contemporary. And I really liked it, the footprint wasn't massive, it's about eight percent from my calculations, larger than what's there now. And oriented east, west instead of going south, so that it actually looks smaller in some ways. Obviously, it's two stories instead of one, but it is, from the street view, can actually open up the view out behind it more than what's there now, which is ninety feet long. This is twenty-four feet wide, move the garage off to the side, but it opens it up a lot. So I think on some occasions, it's okay to do the demolition, even though I would normally agree with Craig that, you know, what some people think are ugly is, is kind of irrelevant to me in, in fighting for historic preservation. But this particular building, I think, is, is not really something that contributes a lot to Rhine Cliff, so I would implore this plan to go forward. Thank you.
Hello, Patricia Mintz, Brunel and Russell. So I just want to point out that Jerry and Kit had mentioned that they, you know, the premise for doing this house is so that they can age in Rhine Cliff. There are no ADA houses built in Rhine Cliff because ADA wasn't a thing, there were no look houses in Rhine Cliff. And so, yes, the house that's there could have maybe been modified to be ADA accessible for them to continue to live and be in Rhine Cliff. But if at some point it just doesn't make sense to renovate a house to make it comfortable for your aging, if there is a house to tear down, to put in a nice comfortable ADA house for a wonderful couple aging in Rhine Cliff, I think this is a great candidate of a house for that. And, you know, I do agree with many that preserving, you know, buildings in historic district makes sense. I own a trailer in Rhine Cliff that was put there in the sixties and I will leave it for you to take it away and I hope you don't make me keep it. So, you know, change is not necessarily that thing. Sometimes it makes sense, and in this case, I think it makes sense so that you can have a new structure that's ADA accessible for this couple to meet.
My name is Clifford Platt. I have properties on both Russell and Brunel, also co-owner of Patricia, the Carrion store in Rhine Cliff. I can repeat a lot of what's been said so far, but I think you've heard that. What I would say succinctly is that, you know, this is a design that's been very thoughtfully designed. By my eye, it's modest in appearance, modest in size, it's not grandiose. And it would be a welcome addition to the annual run. And I support the project.
Hello, I'm Susie. I live at twenty-three Brunel Street in Rhine Cliff. And I just wanted to say that Rhine Cliff, the beauty of Rhine Cliff is that it is not a place fixed in time. There is no one's architectural style that pervades our community, but the beauty is that it, it is a collection of all different times and types of houses. So to that end, I think this, what, what the overlay district promotes is a sense of scale, you know, the massing, height. And I think this follows all of the context that exists in Rhine Cliff now. It doesn't have to be a verbatim style of some fixed place in time, but I think this is an elegant solution to the problem. Thank you.
Could I speak from here? My voice projects. My name's Alan Newman. I live literally around the corner, fifteen hundredth Street from this. Ms. Laborn very courteously came around to introduce herself and invite the neighbors last Sunday afternoon to carefully look at the plans and the models. I've had an opportunity to study it and I find it extremely sensitive as infill. The landscape design particularly impresses me and Winnifangal did a beautiful job. There's nothing on the existing site that connects to us, those stone walls really are part of our community and our historic district. And all across this country, and I've studied historic preservation for decades, the problem we have is post-World War II buildings are falling apart. They need to be replaced. And one of the things we grapple with in our historic districts is compatible infill construction. I find this perfectly compatible, it enhances it. And I visited Havana, Cuba in nineteen ninety-two with a group of historic preservation students. And they were very proud that they had five centuries of important architecture. And they, we can now say with the twenty-first century, our National Historic District has twenty, has five centuries of important architecture. It's our responsibility to replace these buildings with something we'll be proud of and add good twenty-century, twenty, twenty-first century architecture as well as landscape architecture. And I, I drive by this literally every day. The present house could literally be in any community from the Atlantic to the Pacific. And you, it has nothing to do with our area. This, you know, the landscape is quite beautiful in this tight hamlet. And I'm, I'm fully supportive and actually proud of our community that we can have something like this. And it would feed me personally on a daily basis. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. A couple of things. Just to, let me also say, some of you may be among the people who sent in numerous letters in support of the project. But in addition to the folks we've spoken to tonight, I don't have the number, but I can say we already received a number of letters positively supporting this and they are part of the record going forward. We also received, as you pointed out, comments from HAPAC, which were positive and in support of the direction of Rhine Cliff. We also received today, very late, and I'm not going to read it, a finding from the Conservation Advisory Board that was not positive. I'm not going, like I said, I'm not going to read it, but I'm just putting it to the record that we have received this. If you didn't get a copy, we'll be happy to make sure that you did get, I didn't see it until this evening, so. That's, that's where we are in terms of qualifying. I think that we've indicated there are a couple of things outstanding that we need to circle back to. So I don't believe we're going to close the public hearing tonight. to circle back to, so I don't believe we're going to close the public hearing tonight. I would also say that, as I noted at the beginning of the meeting, we are down two planning board members this evening. And I believe this is an important enough discussion in general, in the big-picture scope of things, that I would like to have a, personally, I would like to have those members present as well. I think it is, there are a lot of things being discussed here that are important, not only to Rhine Cliff, but to Rhine Beck in general. And I don't want to have a discussion that doesn't include what I consider to be two key members, whose opinion I value and who I think have a right to have a say in this. A couple of comments I would make, just to sort of maybe put in perspective. I've been listening very carefully, and I have been on the planning board a long time, and Richard knows I was on the Comprehensive Plan Committee. So I'm older than I may look, and I've been around a long time. And I can tell you that when we were talking and developing the Comprehensive Plan, that Rhine Cliff had very special views of what they wanted for their community in the Comprehensive Plan. And at that time, the impression that certainly we got was that Rhine Cliff people did not want to see much change. And when things were suggested and offered to the Comprehensive Plan, there was enormous pride in the community and, to some extent, what felt like a resistance to change, almost a sense of, "We're here, we're special, I'm not saying you're not, but I'm trying to," Richard shaking, "so if I go totally off-base, tell me." So there was this sense of, "We want to kind of draw a line around Rhine Cliff because we don't want to see major change. We don't want to grow. We don't want to be here." And earlier, I think Marco was speaking about the pressure on Rhine Cliff. And I can tell you, and many of, I think, our planning board members who shared this opinion, that we have seen over the last few years, many, many, many applications coming into this board from people moving into Rhine Cliff, who, many of whom need to grow their houses and need to expand. So there is tremendous pressure in Rhine Cliff that's, and we as a planning board have to look at all that and try and balance the overlay district, the landmark district, all of which exist to protect you, and the overlay district exists because the residents of Rhine Cliff wanted that protection. So we as a planning board have to look at that and try and balance that against the 21st century needs of people moving into this community. I'm only sharing this because I want you to understand that we're not sitting here thinking, "We hate this or we love this." But our job is to weigh all these things against all of the things that come into play when we sit here before the planning board. I think this project is further complicated by the fact that there are several questions going on simultaneously around this that are almost separate questions. One is the question of demolition. And you've talked a lot about when it should be demolished, what's worthy of demolition. Does, is it represent something, as Craig believes, doesn't it? Is it the same as every other branch house on the East Coast? All of that is a question of what should be demolished and when does it need to pass its lifetime. The other part of this is the what fits in Rhine Cliff, which is what the overlay district was intended to address. And to some extent, those questions can be treated separately. You know, some, we could argue that the house could come down, but you also could argue that what you're proposing doesn't fit. So that's another level of, I think, conversation that we're trying to have. And they are in some, to some extent, not exactly the same. And also, the other thing that's going on is it's very clear that, you know, the Leiborns are beloved members of the community. And we all want to support people that we care about, the people that are here, and we want to support you as well. But we can't make our decision based on whether people are nice or not nice. And I'm not saying that it relates, but there's a lot of times when people come in here, it's like, "We really like what they're doing, and they're really nice people." It's like, you have to understand that a planning board can't make a decision based on that. It certainly is important that we want people like that in our community. So I'm just laying that all out because that's my sort of, what I'm pondering tonight and what I'm thinking about as we're listening to all this information coming in from all sorts of quarters. And there are a number of factors that will be weighing in. And I hope you take this in experience, which I've walked in, in terms of trying to understand where Rhine Cliff was when the overlay district was put in place, and where we're going, and where we've been, and how we have to change it. And I'm really appreciative of the residents of Rhine Cliff coming in and expressing this opinion because it is your community, and it's part of Rhine Beck in general, but I think we all recognize that there's a certain passion around Rhine Cliff that is special. So was there something, yes, Richard?
Can I just comment on something, Mr.? The Comprehensive Plan, when we did that, yes, there was a group of very loud people, five of them approximately, who really wanted no change. And this is why we can't even change a window in Rhine Cliff without getting permits and having letters sent out to your closest coordinators. It is a terrible thing, and I, Elizabeth said they were going to start working on changing that. But my point is this, during that period, there was a group of about five, very loud, they had a lot to say, they wrote a lot of letters. Since then, two of them have, two or three moved from Rhine Cliff. One has died, and there's probably one still living in Rhine Cliff. It has changed, and it's morphing into what it is. As Sue said, it's not a, you know, something frozen in time, so it's, so, but I think there is, we don't have that negative for that quote. At that time, I maybe, a lot of people thought it was a positive thing, no change, because we didn't want to, obviously, and I know, you guys have a tough job, I know that. So, but I think it's changed and we are respecting other types of...
And I totally agree with that, but my point would be that those five people prevailed, and we have the overlay district, which is the result of it.
You're right.
And the overlay district is what we, the planning board, have to take into consideration. And then Jim pointed out the part of the zoning law, and we might look at that, I mean, I'll speak, and it might be something that the next meeting we literally want to go through and ask ourselves those questions, rather, because that is the guidance that was laid down at the time. And I agree with you, I mean, I agree with you in terms of my memory and your memory, but I can't, that doesn't change, the fact that those people are then gone doesn't change the guidance with which we need to operate. So is it a general comment about the application?
Is this, are they in the overlay? Does their property come into the overlay?
We confirmed that, correct? There was some question about that at the beginning of the meeting.
It's in fact at the very edge of the overlay. So one could say, if it doesn't belong in the overlay district, why didn't they draw a line? Because the building that's just beyond it is another mid-century ranch house, very similar in construction. So I've, I'm not the kind of person who wants to preserve everything in amber. I understand that things need to grow and change, times change, but change needs to be managed. And I really, I feel that demolition is a blunt instrument, and to some extent, we need to respect the changes that have happened over time. And wiping the slate clean and moving on is a bold step.
And I would only say that while we're currently living with the overlay district and the things that were outlined at the time, we also need to be asking ourselves and being careful that the decisions we make here are not precedent-setting and don't open the door to the next change down the road by somebody that is less respectful and comes in with a less code in the plan that's much different. So that's just another level of, this could be precedent-setting, and before we rush into making a decision, we need to make sure that we've covered all the pieces. So I appreciate your comments. Please understand that they're all being taken seriously, and we will speak with you about the next steps, and we will, yes.
Oh, yes, I guess, I am in favor of the project, as you know, and I'm probably one of those five people that Richard said were on that.
Unfortunately, you cannot retract it.
I'm not retracting it, I'm actually speaking in comfort. There's plenty more than five people still there who feel the same way about the overlay district, for the most part. And whether they could try and change it, you'd see that there'd be many people. Having said that, I still think that in this case, there are nuances to be considered.
I think the points that were made today were very well taken, and that's precisely what got me the point of being able to make some of these comments, because I really was quietly trying to take it all in and get some of my thoughts from ancient Rhine Cliff. So if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing until July 15th. Any one?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension of motion. Thank you, everyone. The last, if you all want to check that, then you may, I would just ask you to exit and closing of the public hearing. The last public hearing scheduled for September 15th is the Wildflower School. Thank you very much. The Wildflower School for 705 and 7991 through my, the same, and especially for his partner. We also received a request from the applicant to continue this agricultural ownership. She was away and unable to attend this evening, and we were also, Sean and I, unable to schedule a site visit. The only thing I would mention in regards to this is that many, I think you'll need to see the comment letters from the neighbor, so I think there's some issues that are linked in that that we really need to get answers to. We'll be referring that to the applicant. I don't know, it seemed to me that a lot of those questions are going to be answered by the new resident. I don't think she was really aware of this. So just make sure she gets it, and see where she wants to go. So she was asking for July 15th. Do I feel we should delay it all based on those other... May I have a motion to continue the public hearing to July 15th? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension. Okay, that brings us to the two town board referrals that are in front of us, and I'll turn it over to Jim. One is the short-term rental referral, and the other is the worst-kill workforce housing.
Which one do you want to do first?
Which do you think is the shortest? Okay, let's tie that first.
So, as I'm guessing everyone knows, the town boards did pass short-term rental regulations not that long ago. And I guess after those were passed, they found a few edits that they wanted to make to the, to the law they had passed. So I kind of broke it up in my mental into three parts of what they were, and you can let me know if you have any thoughts on them. I think the changes themselves are pretty straightforward, I guess it would just be if you have any comments you want to throw back to the town board. First one is that the primary residence will not be applicable to short-term rentals which are conducted on properties within a certified New York State Ag district, as defined by New York State Ag and Markets, and is defined in the Code, Section 301 of New York State Ag and Markets Law, or anything that's being operated commonly known as a farm estate. That's the first one. The second one was that the primary residence requirement should not be applicable to short-term rentals which are conducted on a property located adjacent to a property owned by the same property owner, as long as that first property is occupied by the owner of both properties as their primary residence, and that property is or occupied during a short-term rental stay. So essentially, if someone owns two parcels and they've got a house here, as long as they're living on this one, then they're there, they could run out the one right next to them. And the third one is just that they wanted to change the, make an amendment to schedule use regulations to specifically define where all of this takes place. I did find one potential issue with that, and that the language includes the RCO, but the RCO includes land that's in the RL5, RA10, and RM1 zoning districts. I think the intent of what wanted to be done here, at least based on conversations a while ago when we started this short-term rental conversation, was that we really wanted to focus on the smaller lots where short-term rentals could take place, to, that, those were the ones that could be reviewed by the planning board. I don't know we're necessarily concerned about something that might be out in the RA10 that's well back into another property. Maybe, you know, maybe it doesn't matter, but if we are going to include the RCO as a comment as one of the districts that it's in, I just think we then have to include RL5, RA10, and RM1 in that discussion. Because if we just include the hamlet transition, the hamlet and the business overlay, or in the business district, but then also include the RCO, there's going to be this question of what happens in this outer area, where these were specific to the, those underlying districts were. So I just think it's one or the other. If it's the RCO, let's just include all the districts that are included in the RCO. If it's intended to just be those main hamlet districts, the underlying districts that are within the RCO, which is a little clarification statement, I think, is all that's needed. And the only other comment I wanted to make is, actually, just last week, New York State adopted new regulations for short-term rental recording requirements. The property owners are going to have to make it to the state of the orb now. I haven't seen exact details. I don't know if it's going to require zoning amendment change or not, but I did want to mention that it's possible in the near future, we're going to be looking at this again to make some changes, whether it's that the state is going to implement it. It's mostly just recording requirements, I believe, but we may have to tweak that a little.
Ag properties, they're still restricted to the number of guests that they can have at one time, is that right?
It all, the guidance that's in short-term rentals, yes.
So there are just minor changes that affect them? Is the other, the other requirements of the short-term rental law apply to ag properties? It's just that...
The ag property doesn't have to be the primary residence of that agor.
Could they build several huts and host people?
Potentially, but that would come before the planning board, most likely would come before the planning board.
Might, or might not.
Depending on what was done.
Depending. It could, obviously, I think, I don't know, be overhauled, but it's one over which we have very little oversight. I believe that under Ag and Markets law, if someone were proposing to put up housing for farm employees, I don't know exactly how the zoning law, I suppose.
You can still review it.
You could review it, but you might not have the same oversight that you would have. It gets very...
It gets a little tricky. The Ag and Markets law really is intended to ensure that ag use is allowed to continue to operate and that there are no entrances put in the way. So, for lack of a better term, the state doesn't want to see the review process dragged out indefinitely. They want agricultural uses to unfold quickly and efficiently. So the planning board will still get the ability to review it, but it is, it has to be a, you know, a very quick, very thorough.
Right. And that usually applies to ag buildings, but this would be different, this would be...
Well, so buildings are one thing. This is a use of a structure. So if they were going to build a structure, it may or may not come from a land board, obviously, depending on the scenario. This is a use of a structure.
So could all of that to, you know, extreme situation, could someone, I'm not saying anybody in this town proposed to put short-term rentals on a property as part of agritourism and say that was part of their business?
Or build it as a chicken coop. I'd put electric.
I have a question. I read this, is there any enforcement in place for this?
Short-term leases?
Yeah.
Currently, no. That's what the new law does to the town.
Well, I didn't see, when I read it, really, you know, there's somebody that...
Well, theoretically, we enforce it, we do the permitting, the permitting process, and once the permit was issued theoretically, then, then, in an ideal world...
Yeah, but they're strictly dealing with good faith.
Until you have, until you have the capacity in your, in your zoning administrator or other employees to actually... to actually, like you do with anything, sign regulations, violations, the zoning administrator can spend all his time plus, I mean, he can pay 20 hours a week, he can spend 40 hours a week driving around and noticing violations and infractions. So your point is well taken. Is it built into the process to be able to enforce it? Yes. Is the capacity always there to do it?
And the town was, I think still is, part of the program that provides them a list of all the short-term rentals that are being advertised on digital websites. So you can somewhat easily track what's being advertised versus what we have in permanent for if we wanted to go there to be able to do that, some paperwork opportunity to not necessarily drive around town. So there are some, there are a couple.
I mean, you can literally take the reports that come in and compare them to the issues that the departments have been issuing and say, well, these five don't have permits, so we can go after them. It is, enforcement is a resource, is directly linked to the resources available in the staffing levels.
Also, the policing and enforcement are two different things. You know, you can cite the people even if you don't have the manpower to go out there and do, you know, regular patrols and inspection and reconnaissance.
Most of the time, what happens?
Sometimes the neighbors can...
Well, I was going to say, most of the time, the zoning enforcement officer is alerted to a situation by people who are saying, hey, this guy just got a fence in across the street from me and my God, it's 12 feet tall, is that allowed? So, you know, in general, a lot of those things are the result of comments that come into the office. I find the changes to be, I mean, I know that measure two, for example, when we were working on this short-term rental law before COVID, there's a lot of discussion about that, whether you, if you own two properties adjacent to one another, should you be able to? Originally, the concept was no, but I think this is more realistic. The goal here in all of this was that we would have someone on site to be able to monitor the activities in the short-term.
And could it be offered there from one, from that point of view, not just ag properties?
No, I don't, I don't think number two was just ag.
No, it's like an adjacent.
Oh, yes, it applies to everyone.
Yeah, the mother-daughter thing, the parents pass away and so you can rent out, go folks now pay the house on a short-term rental basis. And that was the point that I was going to bring up because again, you have this issue where you're taking what would be a rental house off of the long-term rental market because it's much more lucrative now to rent it out on a short-term basis. And, you know, we're about to have this discussion about building workforce housing. And I've said it again and again and again, the housing is there, it's how we're using the existing housing that's creating the problem.
Well, I know my neighborhood, it's a small neighborhood, it had three houses. The owners are in New York, in the city, have never spent, maybe, maybe have spent a night in it. And they have rental, they have short-term rental people.
All of which has gotten you...
And I know the one of them have up to 12 people. You know, you talk to people often, they have multi-generations went to the home, Thanksgiving, Christmas.
Well, we know it exists to a far greater extent than what you would have in this area. But anyway, any objections or concerns with what Jim's outlined here in terms of our review of this?
I don't know if it's within our purview for me to mention that, that it would potentially have an effect on the long-term rental market if we, you know, why should we give people a pass if they happen to live next door instead of renting those city?
Well, do you want to add something that says that, you know?
I just, I don't know why we need to put that provision in there. I don't know why we need to support that as the, as the planning board. I mean, that's kind of...
Yeah, I mean, then why not just one property away? You're still close enough, you know, you can't even chat about everything.
Across the street or next block.
Why only if you're next door?
People would go stretch, you know, they'll stretch it.
So are you objecting to it being in here at all? Because, oh, or, I mean...
Yes, I'm rethinking my take on it, given Greg's comment. I really think it is unnecessary and it will subject some houses as short-term rental instead of long-term rental.
Sharon, do you have anything? Do you have anything? It's 8:30. It's early.
It's still light out.
I would be happy to add one which to this Jim saying, you know, is anyone objecting to one and three?
No.
The farm state one, I don't have a problem with that. And I think we're right in giving more delay to farms and farm operations.
And we're still, we're still with Jim's guidance of asking for clarification on three?
Yeah.
In terms of the properties. So maybe what we want to say is we have reservations about two.
Yes.
And specifically comment on what we feel the implications are of doing this. Would it should be further considered or further studied? Putting a reservation, it might result in a loss of, loss of, or a loss of... Somebody okay with that? May I have a motion to accept the, the, to support the proposed amendments with the exception of two?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed extension? All right. Back to the last business of this evening, which is the town board referral regarding the focus field for the workforce housing application.
So again, as everyone knows, workforce housing is in front of the town board. They are reviewing the project, have been reviewing the project for two years, about two years now. They will be doing seeker analysis on this and then when the concept plan is approved, the zoning overlay laid down and seeker approved by the town board, if any of that is, that happens, it will come to the planning board. At this point in time, because it is the town board, they do need to send a referral to this board, also to the C, B, W, E, C, and the housing committee. And they're essentially just asking for any input that you have at this point in time. I can bring the plan up if you want. But I just made up a couple of notes that, you know, since you officially reviewed this project last time, the office has attended two board meetings. The town board circulated this lead date to see for seeker, a tree survey was conducted, and the current concept plan was revised, revised and accepted for review by the town board. The layout of the buildings has changed, more buildings that are smaller in size, a group to face more of a screen or a park area in the center of the development, which I think is, well, we say generally consistent with the comments that came from this board under previous memo. They created a footpath to connect to Rock Cliff Road at the eastern end of the property to provide a connection that I believe will go to the existing sidewalk because the driveway is actually removed further to the west, closer to the town highway department for sightline issues and connection to Rock Cliff Road. And those changes were made based on what they had received. They have received a will serve letter from the village for both water and sewer. And then, you know, I made a couple of comments back in 2022 about egress, egress. Those items have been at least finalized for the concept plan stage. We'll have fully basing egress on Rock Cliff Road for this property. One way only going out onto Aster on the backside of the property. There have been discussions about connecting adjacent properties that have been taken with the applicant. I don't know exactly where some of those stand at this point in time. They have acknowledged only the wetland permit, which they will have to come to the planning board for when they come before you or encroaching it in a buffer over by Wells Manor and rain and Aster Drive. And at this point in time, the engineer's been hired by the town board to review the proposal, just taking a look at it and this concept plan just to identify any concerns or issues, while the town board is looking to come into the secret process.
And just for clarification, the town engineer on this application is not CPL?
Correct, it's page engineering. CPL is the engineer of the applicant.
Yeah, I was curious about that.
No, they, they have, they've obviously refused themselves from any review of this application because they are, the engineers were promised to parties. So I just, because you just speak to town engineer and law, we need to be about CPL. Just for clarification, you just...
The, what is it, 12564.1 that defines the workforce housing process? Doesn't it say that it's supposed to start with the workforce housing committee meeting with the planning board? Is there like an initial step that requires cooperation of those two bodies?
The force has left the barn a long time ago.
Yes, or maybe we haven't even reached step one in this process because it's, the idea seems to be that this is done and dusted and I just, I don't think the process is being followed. I don't think it's inherent to the law, so.
For a while, Michael and I attended the meetings of the, it was called the, it wasn't called workforce housing.
Before the open...
Yeah. There was some interface with the planning board.
On the Carney application?
Not on the current application.
Well, I mean, well, interface, certainly there were, the planning board conducted site visits to the property.
That's right.
And interfaced with Mr. Carney in the field and his representatives. I was just remembering...
This was when they already had a proposed plan, but, but yeah.
But it's not like we workshopped it, the workforce housing committee to represent the needs of the town and to articulate...
I don't even think the workforce housing committee came up to work with Kearney. I think it was the town board that worked directly with Kearney.
And I don't see where the town code supports that. It's kind of a...
Well, you know...
So you're not wrong, Craig. I think it, it depends on how you read the law. Says the planning board, the workforce housing committee shall review the concept plan and shall discuss it with the applicant at a regular meeting. The planning board, the workforce housing committee may invite informal public comment at such a meeting. The planning board, the workforce housing committee shall report their recommendations to the town board within 60 days after the next regular meeting following the date of such a referral of the proposed concept plan. The planning board, the workforce housing committee's recommendations may be to adopt, adopt modifications or reject the proposed plan. If the planning board, workforce housing committee failed to report within 60 days, it's deemed to have no objections. It doesn't specifically say that has to be a joint meeting at the long time. It says that they will have to do that, and that did happen in the first iteration of this when we sent the, you know, I don't agree with your report.
I think it was, and I do know that we were, I do know that we did not respond within 30 days. We took the full 60 days since my last election. And we asked for an extension because we were looking for time to review it and respond. I think technically you're right, I don't know that it changes the direction of the decision.
And I'm not brand new to this, I've been looking at this for a couple of years and I believe in workforce housing. I think it's a good thing for us to strive for and I know that even this project is not going to fill all the need that we have in this town. But I don't think this site is the best choice. It falls short on a number of different factors. It's not close to mass transit. If you're going to leave that site and go anywhere in the town, you're going to have to get into a car. So why put it right next to the village? Why not put it anywhere else in town? If you have to, you have to drive to go to the Star Library because there's not a safe crossing to get across Rock Cliff Road. And until those issues are resolved, I mean, where are the kids going to wait for the bus? The school bus?
State building, yeah.
And yeah, I know.
That was the detail that I remember, there's...
It's a very steep site and very densely wooded and it's going to require a lot of cutting and chopping that we normally discourage.
Yeah, not the worst place.
Well, I went through the plans and great detail and I think that they are very, very much improved over what we saw previously. And I think that comments from the various committees and boards have been incorporated to some degree. That there are fewer apartments in buildings, more buildings, smaller parking areas, more landscaping, the fact that the whole thing was moved to the rest. You know, I think using that site, they have tried to incorporate some of the comments from many of the comments that have been made.
And this has also been evolving over the past year. And I know one of the things they were talking about is somehow getting a decent or getting access through Wells Manor and into Village Green to provide a pedestrian or bicycle path or something like that. But that seems to have gone by the wayside.
No, it is not. And my understanding, I asked specifically about that because that connector is, I believe, outlined in the Village Comprehensive Plan that is, I believe, still under review. I don't think they finalized that. I think what we're talking about specifically was that back, Village Green Apartments, there is an opportunity to punch through, that I've been told is a village street.
A Village Green Road is a village, yeah, it's a village street. Because this is a lot of...
Is, is a village-owned street. It is not a private driveway.
Right.
And that there is the ability, a paper, to punch through and create another use of either ingress or ingress, I'm not sure. As, I went to several meetings of the Village Comprehensive Plan to quote about this and the suggestions made, the owners and residents of Village Green support the idea because they prefer, from their own perspective, other ways to get out of that complex because coming out directly onto Route 9, their ability to left in particular coming out of there is severely ruined. I don't, so I don't know that it's not in the mindset of people developing this, it's not part of this plan because I think they're not far enough along to even make it a formal suggestion, but I don't know. The fact that it may have been the Village Comprehensive Plan suggests to me that it's still something that would be under consideration in the future, that's not something we would consider as part of the public.
There was also the village parcel, the one that's on the other side of the line that's kind of a rent move around the Baker House. And there was some sort of a proposal that they were going to use that as the footpath? And that...
My understanding is the only thing I'm thinking right now is what you see in front of you, there's no discussion of many changes to adjacent properties. There have been discussions about possible connections, but it's not part of this project. There is no, or two phase two, this is what they're focused on constructing and putting on the ground. Certainly, you know, we do understand the Village Comprehensive Plan is there, I believe with the last public meeting, Kearney discussed the fact that he's aware of that, he's talking with them. But this is the project that we're brought to this point in time. So we have to take it.
The comment raised about alternative locations, I, that's been raised in a number of public meetings that I've attended and the response that comes from the town board is that no one else has come forward with either suggestions for alternative locations or, you know, Mr. Carney owns his property and so he brought this proposal forward. And in the absence of others, and there's been speculation, you know, you can look at that and say, well, what about this one and what about this one and what about this one? But no one has proposed that. I'm not defending it, I'm just offering.
Yeah, well, that's because the law was designed such that it applied only to that parcel, which is something that Michael and I argued against.
And this one, this was the only other one. This is from them, this is across from Fairgrounds. And I think it pretty accurately depicts essentially the usable area. And, and I think it pretty accurately depicts essentially the usable area on that lot for development, which is the 1.8 acres shown in purple. And, you know, the applicant, I think it's fair to say the applicant determined that that was not a feasible option for building.
Unless you could somehow join it with the old Primrose Middle School property, which is like another 20 acres there, adjacent to it.
So those are the only two that were sold by the town board, you know, about a year ago that was. Five, six years ago, the zoning overlay was introduced. So what is it right now? Is it overly, the town board has to put the overlay down officially through resolution to make this happen? And that's kind of part of where we are in the concept.
And they need our consent to do that, or they want our feedback to do that?
Legislative act like that, it's the Town Board Act. They're looking for any comments you have right now on, on the proposal as it stands, that you'd like to submit. It will come to the planning board for a site plan review after the concept has been approved by them and the zoning has been laid down. So the planning board has to do a site plan review. And we'll, we'll talk about that later.
And John agrees that, that that's okay, that works?
What's that?
For the planning board to do a site plan review. John Ryan is.
Well, we have, we have to, it's a part of the law. It's a part of the law.
But it, but it's not a normal site plan review. Because we don't have the ability to say, we really need you to change this, that, or whatever for this to work. So I don't know what it is, but it's not a typical site plan review.
So nothing about this is.
I'll need to have a conversation with John in terms of that discussion specifically. The planning board still has, you know, the, the, the oversight or site planner. So in theory, you have full site plan review like you would any other project. It has been laid down as a concept and the, the town board will have bonds with seeker on this. So if, for instance, you came back and wanted a major change that would result, say, in a, in a different amount of disturbance or more building area, that could trigger an issue where we have to go back and potentially do a seeker again. So it's, it's a, depending on how it goes and where it goes, and obviously knowing according to John and who are the applicants in this. You know, we'll have to see where, where we end up at that, that, that part of this, we're not there yet. But if significant changes occur, yeah, then it would become a multiple board discussion, and we'll have to determine how to.
Like, if we always be on this site? You know, or I hardly quite changing the site, that's never going to be an option.
I mean, it's like any other site plan that comes in, this is the applicant's proposed, you know, the site they want to put on.
Yeah, on this particular site.
Any comments anyone wants to send back, or?
Yeah, I, I have never understood how they're able to shorten this in onto that slope. Very steeply sloped site. And I just don't think the two-dimensional representation to address this.
There, there were some retaining walls, I don't think I have the slide in here. I was going to put some retaining walls, I don't have the site, I can dig it up.
Yeah, they show a, they show a wall there at the bottom, but isn't that the existing stone wall that's on the property?
Was that down, down here?
No, there's a historic stone wall that runs along the length of the property, like the, right where that show, maybe they're going to get rid of that.
Most of this is, this is more of a kind of visual.
Well, the issue before us tonight is that we have this referral.
Correct.
And we know the discussions that we're having are probably irrelevant, but they aren't ones that we can resolve tonight. They'll come before us and we will have an opportunity to refer to us as a site plan. So I think right now the question is, are there any specific objections to this referral? Or is that the point of this referral?
When I was looking through the plan, Elizabeth happened to come in and discuss it briefly with me. And I, I mentioned that there is lots of room in the basement area and that the apartments are necessarily small, because you can only get lending, federal lending, if you restrict it to certain square footage, et cetera. And that storage in situations like this is always really important. And there does seem to be room in the basement where it could be afforded, maybe for a small fee or something. And her reaction was she didn't think that it was up to the project to provide storage. So I don't think it, it's going to be helpful to send that through as a recommendation.
What is your, what would you like?
Well, I'm just, I'm reading what Jim wrote, and then the number, item number four is what we're concerned with right now, right? The A, B, C, and D.
Well, the, so these are my original comments. Like I said, originally we weren't sure if they got egress, that has been clarified and determined at least to the point for the concept plan. Again, I don't know exactly where the discussion of adjacent properties is, I know it has been discussed. They will need a wetland permit, that's, that will come to the site plan and the town engineer is reviewing, the town engineer, Padge is reviewing.
What is the issue with the adjacent, adjacent property?
Well, just connection, so Whittaker has property adjacent to this that we were talking about potentially connecting to. And then Craig had the discussions obviously about what he wanted to access into the village. So those are, you know, those are ongoing, but they're not.
I mean, this, this strikes me as, to some extent, this is for information, this is updating our information. It's very important here for us to actually respond to.
Well, that's right, I don't have, right, I don't, this was kind of my kind of summary follow-up of, of, we had a lot in the memo that we provided to the, to the town board originally. And some of that has been, I think, you know, taken into account in the design. It's quite.
I think I should go back, because I did this a couple of years ago, where I went through the town code, where it describes what workforce housing is supposed to be like. All the things that it's supposed to be offering, and just make sure that this, where this application is going is answering all of those needs. And I think before it was falling short on a number of factors. And if it continues to fall short, I mean, what are we doing? Can't move it closer to town. It's, right now, it's as close to the village as you can get. But it's just not very well connected.
Well, and that may be, that may be probably comments when we do get to that chapter or other. What makes it connected?
Long before there was ever Kearney, the committee was looking at this property. This was the property.
But why, right?
Oh, I think.
Just because it was owned by the, owned by the hospital and.
I think there were no move back to.
Stock for development.
Yeah, I, I know, I think.
Wasn't the Gardens Workforce Housing 20 years ago?
My understanding, there was supposed to be some, but they didn't go in the way that was intended or something, I don't, I don't know.
It started out, then Oliver started it, went bankrupt, and it sat, when I first moved back here in 2008, the, it was hacked built and the Tyvek was blowing in the wind and the sheathing was rotting off of some of the houses. And then they got money from somewhere, and at that point, the exchange was supposed to be that some of the units were going to be for workforce housing.
There were, listen, Sharon, Sharon was part of the plan where the, the story of that project. You know, you could write a book on that, and you're absolutely right, there were multiple, you know, steps forward and five steps backward and different, different project managers and different owners and bank accounts offshore and, you know, I mean, it was a disaster. And so I wouldn't hold that up as, I don't know.
I know, but it's like, okay, this is the ideal site, we're going to do workforce housing here, and then things happen. People kind of come and go from different boards.
Well, I bring us back to what's before us this evening.
Okay.
As much as I.
The planning board finds this somewhat less objectionable.
Yeah, okay.
Well, it's something to the.
I'll buy into that.
It, it's that, you know, we, you know, we are happy to receive the, you know, receiving an update which fine to, you know, providing us with more information about the progress that's being made. I mean, that's, there's nothing to, you know, you're objecting to a concept of larger and larger questions that are not, that are not built into what we're talking about tonight. And, and those objections about should it be in that location?
No, but the connectivity discussion is, is a valid one. And so, I mean, what I've heard so far, I'm just trying to think what we might write is, you know, maybe we refer something effective, find it, you know, somewhat improved from previous iterations, appreciate the additional info that's been provided. Though a concern has been raised, the proposal may be falling short of goals related to connectivity, particular accessibility to and from the site, you know, without use of a car.
That's really good.
Accessibility is a big part of this discussion, and everyone knows that. This is.
Well, and you could, I mean, in theory, I guess, you know, if you push connectivity, you might be able to put a walking path through the tree without actually putting a road.
A road, yeah, yeah. Yeah, in fact, I thought that's what it was going to be, it was going to be like a bicycle path.
No, it's, well, it, it may start out as that, it may very well start out as that and then grow to something later. But that would be an easy way to provide safe. And.
That complicate the project, because that then gets us into the village, becomes a multi municipal review project. And the comp plan is not effectively, I don't believe, not to be up by the village. So I, I think we may get there eventually, but.
But we could, that is an important thing to have.
I think it's part of our connectivity, absolutely, this has been brought up before, and that is one of the focal points of workforce housing, is connectivity. For something other than a, you know. So if I'm all okay with general railroad, I can drop something up, I can add to it, I can.
And, and I, I don't want to keep people in here too late, but you remember that guy, Emile?
Yes.
Yeah, everybody knows him. And he came out, he was very vocal against this and sent around the postcard and, you know, trying to get people to oppose the project. But he said something that I thought was really telling. If you walk through that site, it is quite wonderful. It's a wonderful wooded site. Why can't this be a paradise? Like, why can't this development be something really nice? Instead of like, wow, we had to cut down all the trees and put in the parking lot, because you need that stuff. Isn't there, is there any way of designing this where it's more part of its surroundings? It's more, it's more natural, it's more friendly to be in wiring?
Well, it's going to be 80 units, it's going to, you're going to have to cut down some trees. But I think efforts were made to move it in that direction.
Yeah, even from, you know, just the last iteration or two, I have been pushing to try and minimize tree removal. Built a lot, I think a lot more before. And I have pushed to try and keep a tree line buffer in source along Ryan Cliff Road. Where it was going to be kind of wide open, I believe, and so I've been pushing really hard to bring it in as tight as possible around the road connection to Ryan Cliff Road so we can at least keep some of that buffer there. So I, so I do things in those improvements that definitely make, in terms of trying to reduce environmental impact. But yeah, obviously, you know, it is a treat site. It's on, you know, I understand that.
Did anybody ever look at the prospect of making it a multi-use site?
It's not zoned for that.
Public access.
It's only zoned for residential and, and, you know, the applicant has actually made it clear that under, I mean, all things being equal, if you did do workforce housing, you could theoretically put more units on here. What? You could theoretically put more units on here if you were workforce housing due behavior. However, obviously, if I'm not considering just the tree removal, things like that. But it is a pretty large property. So.
And Village Green is 180 minutes, I think that's about six acres.
Yeah, what I consider to be a correct response, you want to give us a review of it?
So we find it improved from previous iterations, we appreciate the additional info provided. There was some concern voiced that we may have fallen short of the goals related to connectivity, the accessibility to the site without the use of a car. And would like to investigate, if there are any ways to better design it into the landscape.
What was the last part?
Figure out if there are any ways to better integrate into the landscape.
Integrate.
Integrate the landscape. I, I do think it's.
Hey, I'm satisfied.
Okay, may I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Almost in favor?
Aye.
Close extension, motion carries, I have a motion for John.
Aye, settle.
Second, almost.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.